Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the school board, Suffolk School Board Work Session to order, and we're going to begin with a motion for meeting attendance via electronic device. Mr. Waller?
A motion is needed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.3, Subsection B2, to allow Board Member Phyllis Bauram to participate in tonight's public meeting of the school board through electronic communication means from the resident in Marriott, Durham, North Carolina, due to a medical condition of a family member that requires Board Member Bauram to provide care, which prevents her physical attendance at tonight's meeting.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
May I have a second?
I second the motion.
Are there any questions? Having heard none, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, would you please?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Bauram, would you turn your camera on? Can you see her?
She was just up there. Was she just up there?
Okay. Ms. Bauram, can you hear us? There she is. Okay. Hello. Hi, Ms. Bauram. Can you hear and see us? Can you hear us? Can you hear us? The microphone is on. Can you hear us? Ms. Bauram, can you hear us?
Ms. Bauram, are you connected?
Yes. All right. Good. Good. We just wanted to make sure you could hear us. Welcome. We're glad that you could join us. The first thing that we're going to do this evening is complete the last goal for our strategic plan. This evening, we're going to be working off for the first half hour on our community engagement and communication goal. We're just going to look at developing a goal for communication, for community engagement and communication. So if our members were going to stay seated as we are, we're not going to move together since all of us are going to be working on the same goal. We're going to be working on community engagement and communication. So we're going to be able to talk among ourselves as we are, seated as we are, with regard to community engagement and communication. We've had this information now, this week, and of course, we've had this all along. We have some idea of what we've been doing. So we can begin. I won't let everybody rush to the mic, but if everyone, if anyone has some ideas, let us speak now. We'll let Dr. Branch, if you come forward. We'll get our hints going first, and then we'll move forward. Dr. Branch.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members. Dr. Brooks-Buck, as Dr. Brooks-Buck has stated, you have had this information. We are going to expedite, in a sense, because you all are now professional goal writers as we have worked through these work sessions for the strategic plan. Tonight's focus is community engagement and communication. And in the information that has been provided, we have readdressed the focus of writing a strategic goal, as well as provided you some drafts. That does not mean that those are the ones that you will choose, but they do provide some guidance as we work on a goal for this focus area. Next slide, Mr. Littlefield. And I've gone over that, the focus areas, our four focus areas, as well as our focus for tonight, community engagement and communication. Dr. Brooks-Buck, I'm going to turn it back over to you as we, as we proceed to finalize this goal. Mr. Littlefield, it is not advancing. There we go. And next slide. Also included in the information is what Ms. Antoinette Ward Dickens had provided when we initially presented you all strategic goal draft statements, as well as indicator statements and other information. It's a full compilation of the communication and community engagement efforts from the 2021, 2022 school year. And Dr. Brooks-Buck, I'll turn it back over to you.
We began this process in 2020, 20, yes. We began, well, we began the process in 2020 when we did our evaluation, our board evaluation. Then we decided what we needed to do. We moved forward in 2021 with our first, with our retreat. And when we moved forward with our retreat, we began the process as Dr. Branch led us through the process. We've gotten down through student achievement, climate and culture, human and fiscal resources. And now we're at our last goal that we want to prepare, and that's community engagement and communication. So we'll begin now with that particular goal draft. Are there suggestions, comments, communications that we want to move forward with? If people have ideas, this is the time to share.
Madam Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
We had our strategic plan sample goals and indicators, some that we had before. And there were some good ones, I thought, under this category of community engagement and communication. I think there were three statements, if you all have your information from that. One states that Suffolk Public Schools will increase engagement opportunities for families, the school community, and business partnerships through annual outreach activities and events. And we're doing some of, some of this as a school division, because community engagement is one of the big things that we're doing this year.
Is it?
He's trying to pull it up.
Okay. Okay. Is he opening?
Okay. And, and there were three of them, that Suffolk Public Schools will develop methods of communication with families to include in-person and virtual events, as well as incentives to community members for engagement. That's probably comprehensive with, with the other one. And then, lastly, Suffolk Public Schools will maintain the ability to engage the community through social media, website development, and direct messages in order to promote a consistent community message. So these, to me, are, are good ones. I don't know how anyone else feels about it. Then, of course, we would have to come up with some indicators as well, depending on what we decide.
Board members?
Madam Chair, I concur with Board Member Mayo that those are three great ones. And I just want to make sure, talking to some of the parents, and that they know what our communication pieces are. We have, we already have great communication pieces with our parents and constituents, but to make sure that they are aware of what they, you know, what those communication pieces are, such as tracking the buses in the morning and different things. I think we're doing a great job.
So do you think that goal captures that? The, the goal that she just shared captures that?
Yes.
Because one of the things that, that I think Dr. Branch talked to us about is making sure that we don't get to the indicators before we get to the goal. So we're looking at the goal now.
Right.
Not the indicators, but the goal. So if we look at the goal, we want to make sure that overall goal captures what we want. And, and so that's why I wanted you to listen to what Board Member Mayo read and tell us if you think that captures what we want to capture. And then we can look at the indicators. And that would be, I think, more in line. Would you concur, Dr. Branch, with what the indicators would be?
Right. Those are great statements that Board Member Mayo read, and it was a very collaborative group. We want to make sure that those are included, but more so as indicators, as to how we will do it. The goal needs to be more overarching to capture the community engagement and communication focus. Those are more so in line as indicators.
Okay.
Okay.
Board Member Howell, what do you think of the overall statement that?
Just to be clear, those three sentences were all one goal? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the statement that Board Member Mayo read?
It was three different goals.
It's three different goals?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead. Would you, would you reread that?
Yes.
Do we need to put that in one? Those were the three different goals that were given to us as samples? Three different options?
It was three goals. The first one, this is taken from those, that strategic plan sample goals and indicators, which we did some time ago. The first one was Suffolk Public Schools will increase engagement opportunities for families, the school community, and business partnerships through annual outreach activities and events.
That would be the goal.
Okay. All right.
And then, so we want to combine that?
No, she's, Dr. Branch said that's a goal.
Right.
All right.
Right.
Is that a goal that we can all agree on, that, that's what we want to have as part of the strategic plan?
I think it's true. Absolutely.
And Heather, does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. I was just not clear if those were three suggestions or all one big goal, or, so you've read the first one, and that's the goal. So the other two are what indicators?
No. All right. These are other suggested goals. We can decide to use them or not. All right. The second one reads Suffolk Public Schools will develop methods of communication with families to include in-person and virtual events, as well as incentives to community members for engagement.
That's another sample.
That's another goal.
Okay.
All right. And the third one was Suffolk-
I'm sorry. Dr. Branch, I think, wanted to clarify something.
You have to go to the mics so that Ms. Bauram can, um-
Can hear you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes. A large part of that statement is a goal, but then it gets into the how. So you have to be mindful, the part about incentives, that could be a part of the indicators and things that, from our standpoint as a division, would be action items. So a large part of that statement is a goal. However, we would need to tweak, if that's going to be the choice, the remaining part of it, because it indicate, it pulls from that-
When it says incentives, is that-
Incentives, because that's telling you, this is what we're going to do.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right. And the third one was Suffolk Public Schools will maintain the ability to engage the community through social media, website development, and direct messages in order to promote a consistent community message.
Okay.
Same thing.
Same type of thing.
Same thing. So that would need to be split and teased out with the how, the things that can be done as action items.
Okay.
So actually, the first one was very comprehensive in what we were looking for. But the other two, we have some action items in there that we would need to remove, or we could use as incentives.
Correct.
I'm sorry, as indicators.
Madam Chair, I am looking at, I believe it's the attachment to our agenda, and it says, "Community Engagement and Communication Draft Goals." And there are four on that page, draft one, two, three, and four. So looking at the last one, because I see the first one uses the word incentive in there, and I think we're trying to avoid that for a goal, saving it for an indicator. So looking at the last one, I mean, if we're discussing options here, I don't know when these were drafted, but coordinate a comprehensive community and family engagement and communication plan that increases stakeholder engagement and participation is, that's a goal as well.
Yes, ma'am. And let me clarify, the incentivizes statement. Incentivizes does not designate or determine the how we're going to do it. It says that in our comprehensive plan, we're going to have promotional things, doesn't say how. So we don't want to say with incentive, but it incentivizes some way to attract and promote. Just to clarify that in draft goal one.
And these are, remember, remember, Board Members, these are just samples. If you have some other idea, we can, you can share the other idea. These were samples given to us so that they could be, they're like, in, in, in our terms, story starters for us, if, if this is something that we want to do. These would be starters for us. If, if these work for you the way that they are written, that's fine, we can use them. But if there are some other ideas that you have, this is our time to share those ideas.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And just to, Dr. Buck is exactly right. We, we pulled these drafts that are in your slide deck from your prior conversation, as well as things that you all have said when we were reviewing data. And that was part of the reason why we included the existing community engagement and communication goal up there, and to give you some different derivatives of that, based on feedback that y'all have given to us as a board. So you have the option, as Dr. Buck said, to create your own, or to even massage any of these four drafts, or the first goal statement that Ms. Mayo read, to help give you some direction.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a recommendation of a goal. And I would say it would be to foster a culture of community engagement, promoting-
You want to write that down?
Oh, I, I can type it and email it in. But promoting community partnerships that enrich teaching, learning, research, and creative activities, address critical social, I meant, critical society, societal issues, and contribute to the public good, as far as community engagement. That would be the goal, and then we could break down the objectives and the matrix of how we would attain that later.
Can you read it one more time?
Okay. The goal would be to foster a culture of community engagement, promoting community partnerships that enrich teaching, learning, research, and creative activities, address critical societal issues, and contribute to the public good.
Okay. Now, if we, if we want to do something, the only thing that I would suggest is that if we're talking about community engagement, we need to break that down and say what it is.
Right.
So not to use community engagement in the definition, but to say to foster-
Well, this is, this is the goal. I feel that community engagement should be defined prior to stating what that goal is. Some people get community involvement and community engagement mixed up, just as if you have a grandparents' day, that's not community engagement, it's not parent involvement, I meant, parent engagement, that is, parent involvement. It's doing it for versus doing it with. So when we look at community engagement, I look at it as the school division doing something with the community to help improve student achievement for the student. So when I make the goal suggestion of fostering a culture of community engagement, is to, that's the main environment that is, we're doing it together, we're stronger together, that would promote a community partnership, such as, like we have with our CTE, where the businesses partner with the department to make things happen, that enrich teaching, it's co-curricular, it's those cooperative classes, for an example. When we get into the teaching and learning, it, it ties into your clubs and activities, but also we can tie into other service learning projects that will be in the community, but to bring the parents in the community in, so everybody could have a stake, or, I hope I'm putting it in a way that it's understood, but a stake in their child's, our greatest asset education.
I like, I like that, but what I was trying to do is figure out how to define it without using the term, without using community engagement in the definition, but defining community engagement without using the term community engagement. You know what I'm saying? I understand what you're saying. I think it's a great idea to, to look at how we can tie community engagement to student success, because that's what I'm hearing you say, to student, to making it an overall thing of how we can, can tie community engagement and communication, and tie it to community success overall.
Okay.
And is that what I'm hearing, what you're saying? And that might even be, that might even be something, Mr. Riddick, in, in my opinion, that might be something that we would consider under our, and where's Dr. Branch? That might be something that we would consider under our, under our indicators. It might be, it might be something that we would put under our indicators, making, making those ties, or looking at links to, to things that would make, that would make for student improvement, or that would, would help to engage the community, to be a part of our student improvement activities or whatever. But our overall goal is what? Because our overall goal is to engage the community, our overall goal is to make the community a part of, of everything that we do, but then to put under that, we're making them a part of everything that we do, so that our students can be successful in school, so that our students can feel a part of the school system, so that our students can be more closely linked to the Suffolk Public School family in every aspect of all that we do. I don't know, I may be reading too much into it, but that's the way that.
I absolutely love the statement, Mr. Riddick, and you're right, Dr. Brooks-Buck. There's a couple things that we can look at. An overarching goal, what, with this, this statement, which is phenomenal in its connection, focuses more on community engagement, but your goal is community engagement and communication. So this does not address the communication aspect, but it does reach into the community engagement. Again, looking at the, it's about semantics sometimes. Foster a culture of community engagement. If you were to add the word by promoting, then you have the actions. These are things we're going to do to reach the overall goal.
Okay. We're, we're going to have to turn off the screen just for some technical issues, but we're going to turn it back on. We're having some internet issues between us and Durham, but she says keep going. Okay.
Could you repeat that again, Dr. Branch?
Yes, sir. So to use the statement, it would be more of an indicator. This is our how. This is actions that we're going to take. Adding the word by, for example, foster a culture of community engagement by promoting community partnerships that enrich teaching, learning, research, and critical activities, and contribute to the public good. I believe it, I was trying to write as you were, you were speaking. But semantics makes a difference. So adding the word by actually gives the action. This is how we're going to do it. The goal, though, needs to be more comprehensive, where it adds, unless you're going to have two separate goals for this one area, community engagement and communication.
My recommendation would be to have two, although they work hand in hand. You can't have community engagement without effective communication. But community engagement is, it, it can be very broad. So I would suggest you have a goal particular for community engagement, and then one that focus on the communication piece. Because with community engagement, with community engagement, there's so many different layers of it.
But that's why I'm thinking that we're getting more into indicators rather than the overarching goal.
Yes.
And that's why I think if we do the goal broadly, and then look at the indicators, then we can separate the indicators from the goal.
Correct. And goals are broad.
And the indicators would be more in line with what you're saying. We can do the indicators, and then we could separate into communication and engagement under the indicators. Does that make sense to anybody else but me?
Yes. May I suggest the statement that I read in the beginning, that you said was a goal. Suffolk Public Schools will increase engagement opportunities for families, the school's community, and business partnerships through annual outreach activities and events. And then, and then we could work on indicators.
Indicators.
And which would tie into what Mr. Riddick is suggesting. Is that, am I?
I like the way that one reads. And in all actuality, you're really saying the same thing. It's just one has Suffolk Public Schools, and the other one started off to foster. But the way Ms. Mayo read it, I think, is already written. Let's just move forward with that one, and let's go ahead and dissect what that actually looked like with measurable data.
Absolutely.
So we can have a measuring stick to go forward.
Anybody else? Ms. Howell, Ms.?
I agree.
Jenkins?
I agree.
Do you all agree?
I do.
Ms. J, Ms. Howell?
I agree.
Okay. All right. So we'll go with that as the goal? Is everybody, do you have consensus there?
That was your first one, right?
Okay. And then we'll look at indicators, which would get to what you're saying, Mr. Riddick. We could get to writing down some of the indicators that you're suggesting.
Can you please reread that goal again?
Yes.
Certainly. Suffolk Public Schools will increase engagement opportunities for families, the school community, and business partnerships through annual outreach activities and events. You're welcome.
All right. Now we're going to look at indicators. And so, Mr. Riddick?
Madam Chair, question? The last part, the through activities and such, wouldn't that be tying an indicator to a broad goal? And then if we take that off, we can use that as an indicator?
Yes.
Anybody?
Yes.
Ms. Howell, so I think you're on to something there. The way that we normally would suggest to the board to develop indicators is going to be based on the things that you actually mentioned in the overarching goal. So an indicator would be about business partnerships, for an example. Another indicator would be about how you're going to engage families, so that you have, to Mr. Riddick's point, something to measure each aspect of the goal on there. So in looking at what Ms. Mayo had read, you may have an indicator for families, you would then have an indicator for the school community, you will have an indicator for business partnerships- you will have an indicator for business partnerships, and then maybe one more to potentially give a numerical value to how many outreach activities or events, or how you would grade those. So you're looking at maybe four to five indicators based on the goal that Ms. Mayo read.
Okay.
And then, I would, I would think that, or the way that I conceptualized it, when we looked at "through," I conceptualized it as our target audience would be families, businesses, the community at large. That's the way I looked at it, as ending that, that would be our target audience. But then the indicators would again be which groups we're going to target, what outcomes we expect from these groups. Do we have Ms. Barham back?
Yes.
Okay.
I can hear, sometimes I hear you.
Okay. We, we, can you read that, can you read that goal again for Ms. Barham? Fellas, we're, we're trying to read this goal, Ms. Barham, Board Member Barham. We're trying to read this goal for you. Would you read that goal for her?
Okay. Suffolk Public School, Suffolk Public Schools will increase engagement opportunities for families, the school community, and business partnerships through annual outreach activities and events.
Do you have any questions or concerns about that as a goal for communications and, uh, community involvement and communications? Ms. Barham?
No, I think that covers it completely.
Okay. And now we're working on indicators to go under that. We're gonna work on indicators for a few moments to go under that.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Regarding our Title I schools, in the Title I grant, we have to address family engagement and parent involvement.
Right.
What did we write so we can ensure that our goals are in line with what was written in the grant?
Family. I believe one of the, one of the pieces is family involvement.
It does include that.
The school community. Right. Businesses, all of that includes them.
I'm asking for more detail. For an example, if you wrote in the grant that we will have a minimum of one family engagement session per month at our Title I schools, that's something that we may want to implement division-wide. Where each school, whether you're Title I or not, you have a family engagement or a community, family and community engagement event at least once a month, as far as your school calendar. And you, you see the direction I'm going with. I wanna make sure that we are also staying in line with what we have written in one area, so we're not conflicting.
Actually.
That would be your PTA meeting, you have that once a month.
No, that's, that's, that's not family engagement. PTA is not a subsidiary of the public schools, it's an autonomous organization. When we're talking about family and community engagement, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the school division, what we're doing, although the PTA is a partnership, that's not a sole engagement on behalf of the division.
Madam Chair, I can answer Mr. Riddick's question. You're right, Mr. Riddick. Our Title I and all of our schools would create goals for their own family and community engagement based off of the division strategic plan goal. And so in the information that we provided in Ms. Dickens' PowerPoint, uh, Google slides that she shared with you all, she included some of the Title I community engagement activities. We actually have to keep attendance with those activities. So we don't want to put that in our, our, the goal as written without the "through" part, as Ms. Mayo stated, actually includes family engagement activities. You're right. Title I requires engagement activities, and we have to keep record of all of them. And so that would answer the goal per school, whether it's Title I or not, because their goal, their school goals should focus on the division goals.
Well, let me, let me ask this question.
Thank you.
So I will be totally out of, out of order and incorrect. All of our schools are not Title I schools.
Correct, we have 10.
That's, that's one. And then two, our goal for the entire school system would be inclusive of the entire school system, but would not have to indicate something for every school in our goal for the entire school system. And that was my point. Okay, so just to be clear on that, that would need to be included in the goal.
No, ma'am.
We're the indicators now.
Right. But my question derives from Madam Chair is, if my memory serves me correctly, through Title I, you're required to have a division-wide family and community engagement policy and cite school family engagement procedure. So what I want to, what I'm asking is if we're developing, developing a goal that is already in line with these areas that we're required to have, exactly what do we currently have in place? So it's some things that we can just synthesize together and just go from there versus reinventing the wheel. What I'm not, I'm not saying spend Title I money on non-Title I schools, but if you have a format that is working in Title I schools, you can use that same format at the other schools.
But as far as the strategic plan goal, the goal is broad enough to cover that. And yes, in our Title I grant, we do have to define our community engagement and what we're going to do, what our plans are for how we're gonna spend it for Title I. But as a division, whether it's Title I or not, there needs to be a focus on community engagement and communication.
I agree, but my initial question that I asked was, what does those plans say? The other parts were spinoffs from other conversations. But what I initially asked was, what, what do those plans say? What do we have in those documents? So we can maybe be inspired as we are drafting this one, since we already have a form of it already drafted somewhere else.
Madam Chair.
Let me, let me ask something first. Are we still talking about the goal that we've agreed to accept? Are we talking about looking at this for ideas for our indicators?
I'm talking about this as looking at it as far as ideas for our indicators, because when drafted.
That's, that's, that's the only thing.
Right, because when drafting these plans, you're doing the same thing.
For indicators, that's the only thing I was confused about. Are we looking at ideas for our indicators? Are we looking at it for ideas for our goal? So we're finished the goal, now we're looking at indicators. Okay. So Dr. Gordon is going to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna try to.
What you are looking for, I think. And I think that some of the board members have worked on this, so they have some ideas for indicators as well. So Dr. Gordon, would you share with Mr. Riddick? I think he can answer your question. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Riddick, your first part of your question was to ensure that whatever we're writing didn't either rewrite or go against what Title I was requesting or was required for our 10 Title I schools. And I, I kinda wanna use the sample indicators that we had in building exceptional schools, because when you're writing your indicators, you wanna task the school division or school to do things. But what you have in Title I is gonna be more specific for that individual school. So you won't see the same thing at all 10 of our schools. So for example, on the building exceptional schools, we had enhanced family outreach and communication tools to impact student success. That's also the same thing that would be in Title I. It just may attach a number or a percentage to it depending on what the data says. Another one would be to increase visibility of school programs and school needs with all stakeholders. And I'll, I'll give one more example, to enhance partners in education programs and volunteer connect programs. So you can see for your indicators, you still wanna keep it somewhat general, because if you write your indicator so specific, it doesn't allow the individual schools, you all as a board, or us as a staff to have any flexibility. So try to keep it a little, my only suggestion would be to keep it a little bit, a little bit broad, but to also make sure, to your point, that you include it in the, basically, boundaries of what's in Title I. The Title I goals are gonna be specific percentages that are normally attached to them. But your division goals are gonna kinda give direction to that, because Title I is also gonna ask us, what do you, what are you doing that not only matches with the data that we have to submit, but also what your division strategic plan is?
So you're not looking for an event that you do, you're looking for just an indicator that something is going on? So it's general, is what you're saying? Okay. Is, does that speak to what you're talking about? Maybe I'm confused about what the question is.
I just wanted.
I'll admit that I'm confused about what the question is.
I just wanted the information so I can look at it and see what could we use from those places where it's already in place. I am fond of putting the measuring stick on it. If we say parental involvement, what, having one parent show out of a 14,000 school division, that's parental involvement. But if it's worded as opportunities for parental involvement, whether they come or not, these X amount of events we're having a month are opportunities for family engagement. So to see how we have our Title I stuff already formatted for me, it would have given me more classic examples I could pull from and see how we could use here without tying the vision down to a certain number or not being too specific, but still being broad. I just wanted the information.
Okay, well, that's, this, this is not, that's why I think, I think we're hearing two different things, and that's why I was confused about what we were talking about. Dr. Gordon just read to you the indicators. I didn't know if you were looking for indicators or specific activities, and that's why I said, what I said, are you looking for specific activities?
The indicators can be specific activities.
No, that's, that's, I don't think we're at that point. I think that we're at, Dr. Gordon just read the indicators for Title I. For, from, from the current strategic plan, I'm sorry. What are the indicators for Title I, which is what Dr., what Mr. Board Member Riddick is looking for?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is the indicators for each Title I school. But it has to fit under the umbrella of what you all decide.
To do.
As indicators in your strategic plan.
Okay. So we don't give indicators for all the schools?
I get that point. Only thing, I just, I just wanted to see the document or whatever it was, so I, we can get some idea as to how it's supposed to look. Because there's a document that deals with family engagement, what, family or community engagement, and communication. It's already existing, it's already out here. If we can look at that, it would make this process of what we're doing now more easier, because you don't have to copy it, but it gives you an idea of what we're working towards. Dr. Branch, you were spot on when you were talking about the indicator piece. I agree with the goal we have. I just want us to just be able to move forward.
And Mr. Riddick, as Dr. Gordon stated, we wanna make sure that the indicators are general enough also, because with 10, 10 Title I schools, the goal still needs to be increasing family and community engagement, and then the Title I grant will speak to how each of those buildings will do that. That's the how, that's the action item. It's in the grant. But still, the indicators for everyone needs to be very general, because there are 10 Title I schools, but we have 11 other buildings. So everyone's goal as far as family and community engagement and communication will be different, but yet aligned with the division goal.
At this time, I believe, well, at this time, we're gonna give this three more minutes, and then we're gonna move forward. And I'm gonna ask you, because we're gonna have to move to the next thing, or we'll be running into some other minutes. If you would at this time, if you have ideas for indicators that we don't cover, if you do have, I'm gonna give three minutes to sum this up. If you do have some indicators that you've written, please share them now. If you do not have indicators, but you think of some, if you would email them to me, I would appreciate it. If you'd emailed them to me this week, copy Mrs. Gardner, and I will share them with each of you. If I get a summary of them, if you, you don't have to think about them right this second. But if you will, I'll share them with Mrs. Gardner. As a matter of fact, you can copy both of us, so I can make sure she has them. We'll put a list together and share them with everybody. And then we'll send them forward to Dr. Branch, so we can get them in a document, okay? If that will work for everybody, because we do need to move forward with the next, with the next activity. And remember, when you look at this, this is for the entire school system, not for a specific school or a specific set of schools, or the schools in our borough, or whatever. These are for all the schools. High school to pre-K to everybody. And we have to keep that in mind. And it's sorta hard to keep in mind when you're focused on a specific area. So if you do have some ideas, please forward those. If you have something right now, if we can share them in the next minute or so, please share them. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is a discussion and update on our CIP. We were supposed to receive any input from any board member by 12 o'clock on yesterday. And the reason that we asked, we gave every board member a week to go over the existing CIP. I wanna say this, because I think it's necessary to be grateful to our team, who's worked very hard on this, and to our city council members who supported us. We have struggled with a whole lot of things for quite some time, but we've finally gotten to a point where somebody's giving us some money and we're moving forward. And so we're grateful for that, between what we have gone through and the fact that we got some CARES Act money, and the fact that we've been able to move forward with something I consider a blessing, and I'm thankful. But if anybody had any changes, they had them in by 12 o'clock on yesterday. We're gonna move forward. Dr. Gordon, would you introduce the plan and carry on this discussion?
Yes, I'm gonna call to the podium Ms. Wendy Forsman, Chief Financial Officer, who's gonna also be assisted by Mr. Terry Naipier, Director of Facilities and Maintenance. And before Ms. Forsman gets started, what you're gonna see in her slide deck is comparisons from what the school board has previously approved versus where the city has actually appropriated the money on the 10-year CIP. As Dr. Brooks Buck stated, when we asked the board for their feedback to see if there are going to be any changes based on the order of some major projects that are coming up. One major project that's already gotten started is the replacement of JFK, which will be an action item that will take place during the regular meeting. But we also wanna be able to show you all some of today's dollars amounts, keeping in mind of the cost of inflation for supplies and materials and the overall supply challenges that we have in getting some materials here on time. So Ms. Forsman, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Gordon. Good evening, Board. We have some, this is historical, what I'm gonna start with. This is the historical perspective of what you approved last year, what we sent to the city, and then what the city did in their CIP that they approved last year. This gives you just a baseline of where we start, and then we'll talk about escalation and some other things as we move along. So you can see that the ongoing project that we have is the major repairs and systems replacement. And you can see that we had an escalation to 7 million last year in the plan to give us 51.3 million over the course of the 10 years. The city approved 3.575 million for '22, '23. We needed that to, if you can remember, to match a grant that we received. And then they transferred, again agreement, to transfer the money over to Northern Shores to provide the money for the addition at Northern Shores. So it resulted in 14.3 million less funding than requested, because we agreed to make that transfer. The operations facility Phase 2, the school's request last year was 14.7 million. The city approved 14.7 million. We asked for it in '23, '24, they pushed it out to '27, '28. city approved 14.7 million. We asked for it in 2324. They pushed it out to 2728. So the result would be that we would not have a warehouse and move out of Frehney Avenue until at least 2728. For John F. Kennedy, the school's request was for 56.4 million dollars. The city approved 50 million dollars. So the replacement school architecture engineering bid is out and back. It's underfunded at this point, as of last year, by 6.4 million. We'll talk about, some more about the escalation and what we're asking for this year, as we get into the regular meeting. Northern Shores, two-story addition. We asked for 15.2 million for 2324. They have agreed to that 15.2 million, but they pushed it to 24 to 27. So the Northern Shores addition will be completed if we stay on this timeline by fall of '27. Note, again, we're using the major systems money to fund this project. Terry, you want to talk classrooms?
Good evening. It's been a little while since we've talked about this, so let's go back and review. And Mrs. Howell, I'm not sure you were a part of this from the outset, anyway. You'll remember when we talked about the addition at Northern Shores. We were looking at approximately a 30,000 square foot addition, 29390, with 20 additional classrooms, which would provide Northern Shores with 500 additional seats. There were teacher workspaces on each floor, and you'll see that when we get to the floor plan. There are student restrooms on each of those two floors. There is a cafeteria addition that is on the west side of the current kitchen, with 120 additional cafeteria seats. And there are two classrooms where the addition will connect to the existing building that would be reduced in size by probably half, and those would have to be repurposed. But the major impact there is that we lose 50 seats out of those two classrooms where the addition does attach. So we get a net gain, basically, of 450 classroom seats at Northern Shores, when it's all said and done. If you look at the drawing here, and this is a conceptual drawing that was done for us a few years ago, and it still holds, as far as we're concerned, it still holds true for today. The existing building is the colorless black and white section. If you look at the middle left, the cafeteria addition is just to the west side of the kitchen. There is a corridor that connects the existing building, comes around the fifth grade hall there, and comes in a side entrance. And those rooms that are marked RES, those are the two classrooms that we would be losing and would be reduced in size, where we connect to the existing building. The blue area there, those are the 10 first-floor classrooms that would be gained. The two restrooms there are marked by T, and then there's a teacher workroom in that wing in orange. This is the second floor. You can see it's identical to the first floor. There are 10 additional classrooms upstairs. There's a teacher workroom up there. There are also restrooms up there. This is a 3D layout where you can see, again, did we go backwards or forwards there, John?
I got it. There's a second, and then this one came.
Okay. That's a 3D rendering of the first floor, next slide. That's a 3D rendering of the second floor. And this is what the building would look like, a bird's eye view of the addition. That section on the left, you can see where it connects to the first building, or the original building. So even though it's two-story, and Northern Shores is currently a one-story building, the way this would be done, it ties in very nicely. It would be a nice transition from the original building to the addition. There is a side 3D view of what it would look like from the playground side, a bird's eye view. And as you can see, everything looks, it's very, it's very nicely matched, the way that would turn it. The roof would be the same. And as you know, we have a new roof there now. The roof on this addition would, would match what we've put there. So it's a nice-looking building. It doesn't look like we added to it, and we do gain 450 additional seats. Any questions about that part of it?
Thank you, Terry. All right. So the next, next project on the list is the College and Career Academy at Pruden. We had requested 2.1 million for 2324. The city put no money in their current capital improvement plan for that renovation project, and so we're going to have to find some funding for that and request it again this year and see if we can get it back in the capital improvement plan. Unfortunately, it's not in there right now. So that, that is a big change for us, because we're looking forward to moving forward with that. Forest Glen Middle School Replacement, we had asked for 54.38 million. The city approved it, but again, pushed out the timeline. We had 26, 2026 through 2028. They pushed it out to 28 to 32. Same with Elephants Fork. They approved the amount, but pushed it out further in the plan. And as we've talked about before, anything past the five years is really something that doesn't generally occur. You have to get it within those first five years for things to, to stay. Kilby Shores, I'm sorry, John Yates, the same, 59.8 million. They agreed to that, but also pushed that out. Their timeline's a little bit different than ours, because they push everything in the last five years together, so it's hard to know exactly which year they're going to start, because they just give us one number. But you can see, basically, the same timeline we had, but it would be after 32 before we'd have all the funding. Kilby Shores, same thing. They approved the amounts, but moved it slightly from what we had. Again, 32 would be when the funding would be complete. Nansman Parkway, again, the money is correct. We had it 3132 out at the end, because we weren't sure of the funding. They've pushed it to the last five years, so again, we don't know exactly which year they would fund it. And then the high school addition. For Nansman River High School, you can see that we asked for 26, 25.6 million for 3132. They agreed to that in those last years. And again, the addition would be built after 32, 2032. Then we do want to remind you of other funding that we're working with, so we wanted to talk a little bit about the CARES Act funding. We set aside 11.4 million dollars in CARES Act for roofs and shingle roof replacements with metal, standing, standing seam metal roofs. And we did three of those this year, as you all know, and this would save the taxpayers and the city that 11.4 million dollars. Again, these new standing seam metal roofs, here the schools were putting them at, they are much less maintenance. You don't have the leaking and the problems you have with the shingle roofs, and so the reason that we'd like to replace them is because of all the money we've been spending to repair those roofs. We did Oakland-
Macben.
Macben and Northern Shores this year. We also set aside 1.9 million out of the CARES Act for replacement, a replacement chiller here at Kingsfort Middle School, which saves the taxpayers that 1.9 million as well. So that was a total of 13.2 million dollars that we have obligated in the CARES Act that saves the City of Suffolk and Suffolk taxpayers, 13.2 million dollars in local funding. HVAC priority list, we want to bring this up, because we have, we're really proud of the fact that since 2015, we have replaced 23.8 million dollars in HVAC systems, which is huge. When we first started, we had systems that were well over 40 years old, and were breaking down all the time, and we couldn't get parts. And so we have replaced 23.8 million since 2015. And that includes the 2.6 million that we put in through CSLRF, FRF funds, sorry, that's a lot of letters. And that money came from the state. And remember, that was the match money that we needed this year from the hazardous materials and major systems project of the city. So that's why we needed to keep that money this year in, in the CIP. So that's the reason, is because we received that grant, we had to fund the match for it. In addition, sinkhole repairs have cost us, to date, 2.8 million dollars. And I just want to make sure that you understand, those repairs have been made using operating funds. We have not asked the city for CIP funds for those, or to help us repair those, and those are capital expenditures. Terry, would you like to come and talk about the SAO planning for the Human Resources
The former Human Resources Building, just in case you don't know where that is, the new city hall, the parking lot across the street from it, the, the old Human Resources Building is up on the hill behind that parking lot across the street. The adopted CIP, 6.5 million, the estimated costs are at 9.5 with a difference of 3 million dollars. Dr. Gordon, myself, and Ms. Forsman, we have had many discussions with our counterparts at the city. We are working on that, and we're actually moving ahead at this point. And this is a conceptual idea of a floor plan that we've been looking at. This isn't written in stone yet, but I think it is a, a good concept. And basically, what you're looking at here, this is the first floor of a three-story building. Each one of those colored areas represents a department and all of the people associated with that department. And everybody has their spot on the first floor, and it's kind of hard to see, and it's kind of hard to read for me, but there are administrative services in orange, executive and service, health services, I believe, in light blue. And then it goes on, and you can see how everything is arranged, so that when you come in that building, we do have traffic flow control at that point, even though we had to alter this design a little bit. But everybody has a spot, everybody's together that should be together, and I think that's important for the operation of all of those departments. If you go to the second floor, you can see the same thing. You come up to the second floor, each department has an area. Everybody that should be together is together. There, there are common workspaces on all of these floors, which all of the departments need. Next slide, please. And then third floor, up where the superintendent would be, he has his suite, and then everybody else that's on the third floor. And you can see, by the way, these are color-coded. The whole idea here was to kind of compartmentalize departments together, so that they could be as efficient as possible. And I think this concept does a good job with that.
And just to add to Mr. Napier's quick overview, the first floor is going to be the areas where we know that people will attend the most. Human Resources, Student Support Services, et cetera. Second floor is mainly teaching and learning, the entire floor. And as you can tell, we also put everyone that reports to Dr. Branch on that same floor. Third floor is very similar to what we have in the seventh floor now. My office, Mr. Wallace's office, community engagement. We will also have Dr. Byrd's team up on that floor, so we can make sure that I have direct contact with the schools. And the difference that you saw from the 6.5 million that was allocated to the 9.5 million dollars that was requested was after we took everything out, all interior windows, et cetera. And I know that there's been several levels of discussion about the Human Resources Building. 5 million of that 9.5 million dollars is to bring the building up to code. This includes elevators, this includes mainly sprinkler system, the building does not have one. This also includes new stairwell, et cetera. And so we're really only asking for 4.5 million dollars to actually be able to make the program, the building itself, operational for our programs. And as Mr. Napier said, we had a great meeting with Mr. Moore and his team. Last week, we have our first planning meeting for this, to take the sketchwork that you've seen here and actually apply the conceptual design work. We've spent about $80,000 on these, as well as some of the other requests that the city has made, out of the 500,000 that was allocated to us for design work for this. So I'm confident that Mr. Moore's team will be able, over the next two years, to be able to come up with that difference of the 3.0 million dollars. I also want to remind the school board and the public that our current lease in the professional building expires on December of 2023. So it is a very, you know, imperative that we begin to move on that now. We are willing to, to do some things to make sure that we can allow this building to be completed. This building itself is not on the school division CIP. I want to make that very clear. This building is on the city CIP. It's on pages 42 through 44 in the city's budget book. I know there was some confusion over that, but this is a city project, as Mr. Moore, the city manager, made very clear to us. At this point in time, Dr. Buck, we'll turn it back over to you if there's any questions of Mr. Napier, Ms. Forsman, or myself.
Thank you, everyone. And as I said when I started this, I really appreciate the work that you all have done, because this has been work to get this done, to get us to this point. And I really do appreciate the work that you all have done, as well as the work with the city's team that's been working with you all to get this accomplished. It's taken a long time to get to this point, and God knows, I hope we move forward. Are there questions by board members at this point? Questions by board members?
Madam Chair.
Board Member Riddick.
Regarding the Human Resource Building, is this current setup going to meet the, is it going to alleviate the needs that we have far as housing our executive staff? We don't want to pacify and put a Band-Aid on a situation. We want to fix it, because if we're going to move, well, we have to move from the professional building, we want to make sure that we're moving into a building that meets our needs, so that way we won't be coming back to the city in a year or two after, saying we need more space.
That's a great question, Mr. Riddick, and that's been the driving force. What Mr. Riddick is alluding to for our entire school community is that in our professional building now, we actually have several members of our team, three to four members in an office, two to three people in an office, they're actually on top of each other. We've tried to do some things to alleviate some of that space. The biggest challenge has been with Dr. Branch's team and teaching and learning, that we've had to move to schools, basically, in order to be able to make space, which eliminates lots of avenues for collaboration. So as the board takes another look at the design there, you will see that we have enough space for, if there's going to ever be any future growth, but also to make sure that all of our coordinators, directors, chiefs, et cetera, everyone has their own office. We also want to make sure that there was going to be, as Mr. Napier said, limited access to certain parts of the building. We've had some preliminary conversations with Mr. Littlefield for security, to make sure that the building also was going to be, basically, doored off in certain areas. So to answer your question, Mr. Riddick, yes, this building definitely allows for our current level of staff that we have, as well as growth of positions in the future, if necessary.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I hope you can hear me.
Yes, Vice President Barham, we can hear you.
At the move to the new facility for the school board, will there be adequate parking, which has been a major issue over the years with the present site? And I was wondering, what is the plan for parking in that area?
That is a million-dollar question, literally, Ms. Barham. One of the things that Mr. Moore's team has admitted to us is there are some concerns over parking, but we actually have two options. The first one that we're looking at is they have to be able to take, to take care of the breakaway of some of the asphalt from the ravine in front of the Human Resources Building. Our immediate solution to the, to the parking concerns is going to be the field behind the HR building, that we're going to end up annexing a part of that for parking. We estimate it with a potentially 100 members of the SAO, and also being able to allow for 50 visitors, we're going to kind of circle that number of 150 necessary spots for parking. But the city's going to have to be able to phase that part in. So one of the things that we're going to do as construction is, being close to completion, is begin to bring in some, Mr. Napier's done a good job of bringing in some, basically, rocks and some other type of materials to annex the field in the back behind the HR building, where we will try to get staff to park, to make sure that the front spaces will be open to visitors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
I have questions.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes, I guess I have two now. So when you say the field, are you talking about the baseball field? Okay. And December 2023, we leave, we lose our lease, right? Correct?
So there's going to be some negotiations that Anthony Hines, our great purchasing manager, Ms. Forsman and I are going to be dealing with, because we also know that at this point in time, you know, it's taken us some time for this project to move forward. And we know that the renovations to the HR building will not be able to be completed in 15 months. So the negotiations that we're looking at is, first, to see if we can get a six-month lease extension, and then potentially a year extension. I do not want to go past December of 2024 to be in the school administration office, because the professional building itself needs a lot of work. So those are going to be some of the discussions that we're going to have, along with the city manager, with the owner of the professional building. I understand the professional building is also potentially going to be up for sale soon, so the city's going to be able to get back to us with some options there. But we know that we're going to have to end up staying in that building past December 2023. It's just going to be a matter of if it's going to be June 2024, or December 2024 for the completion of the project.
Are there other questions? Yes, Board Member Riddick?
Regarding the Northern Shores project, I'm, I'm glad to see- Regarding the Northern Shores project, I'm glad to see that we're making traction with that project. Have we explored the idea of tying in a possibility of putting solar on the addition roof to alleviate cost applications?
We have explored the idea. Mr. Hines has actually been in discussions. We haven't specifically pinpointed Northern Shores, but we have had discussions in terms of possibly putting some solar panels on some of our buildings, possibly at CCAP. I'm not sure how well that would work with the new standing sea metal roof. There's a lot of considerations there with that. But if not at Northern Shores, we can certainly look at some other buildings where we could do the same thing.
Okay. Because it is my desire, I'm only one person, but for any new construction, that we look at cost-saving avenues and going forward. So I think this is a great conversation to begin having since this is a project that we have yet to begin, but it will save us in the long run, even if we can't run the entire building off of solar. But because this is a secondary shelter, if I'm correct?
Northern Shores?
Yes.
Yes. The only primary shelters we have are the three high schools.
Okay. So I think that would be still beneficial for that community to have solar in the event. And it will also save us money as well in the long term. So this is food for thought.
Are there other questions? Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Yes, indeed.
Mrs. Gardner put in front of you a new sheet. I'm sorry for the small numbers. However, I did want you to be aware, because there was some confusion about John F. Kennedy and the costs that they already have provided us versus what we're asking for, I added a column to that sheet to show that the 7.5 million of the total cost was already allocated prior year. Again, it won't be a part of the CIP because it's a prior year, it's only a 10-year look forward. So I wanted to make sure that you understood that. If you look at that line, you'll see 7.5 million dollars on a prior year, and then you'll see the 50 million additional request for 57.5 million total. The other change from the sheet you saw before, and I'm sorry I didn't notice it prior to giving you the sheet, was the escalation for one of the, for John F. Kennedy, John Yates Middle School, was compounded upon itself and was like 93 million, and I didn't realize it was doing that. So when I looked at it, wait a minute, this is not right. And so we went back and we fixed that formula so that it dropped it down to where it ought to be, which is 73 million. So I wanted you to have the most up-to-date numbers and the most up-to-date sheet that you could have. So I apologize for those two things, but I wanted to make sure that I drew your attention to those two things.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
She just sparked my memory on something that I wanted to make mention of. Is it possible for us to explore the option of increasing our capacity amount at John F. Kennedy? Because when you're looking at the capacity at Kingsport Middle School you're talking about, we're already in thousands here. And as you see, the new development has continued to grow, and this development wasn't in place when we had the facility study. You see the new development growing in this corridor of the city. King's Park Middle School pull a lot of kids from the downtown area. And my concern would be we're going to run into the same problem that we ran into with Fred Cherry. And I know we asked for additional space, and then we had to reduce it based on funding. But I wanted to see if that's something that we possibly could explore to see how many persons we can get.
I do believe, I'm going to let Dr. Gordon speak to this, but I do believe at this point in time, how many students do we have at John F. Kennedy?
A little over 600.
We have a little over 600, and I believe that this building now is at 750. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we have, Dr. Gordon, you want to speak to that?
And Mr. Riddick and I have had a couple of conversations about that. And, you know, ideally, of course, we would love to be able to build an 800 enrollment school, very similar to what we've done with Colonel Fred Cherry. There's two challenges we're looking at. The first one is, as Ms. Forzeman had on the slide, we asked for 56.4 and only got 50 million. So we're already 6.4 million, kind of in the hole. And the second piece is, if you look on the sheet that Ms. Gardner passed out to you, we're looking at $460 per square feet. So you can kind of do the math of 460 times 50 to kind of figure out the additional costs potentially that it would take to do that. So at this point in time, unless the city decides to give us more money, because we're still also dealing with inflation, we're going to be pretty tight with everything that we do. And we want to be able to try to avoid as much value engineering as possible, which we think has led to some of the sinkhole issues in the past, by being able to keep everything the exact same way it's being planned. And those are some of the conversations that Mr. Hines and Mr. Napier have had with the selected vendor. We've also had those conversations with the city themselves. The city is kind of stuck a little bit because of their $30 million debt threshold. And when they, part of the reason why Ms. Forzeman wanted to explain to everyone the amounts that were given, that 7.5 million dollars, for example, for JFK for this year is mainly design work. But we know originally when we set this up, it was supposed to be design plus construction. But because of supply chain issues that everyone is telling us that we're going to be able to face, some of that money is now going to have to be moved to the next fiscal year, which will probably increase that from 22 million to probably about 26 million, because we're only going to spend about $3 to $3.5 million this year. So the main thing that I want our entire board to know, staff, school, community, is we have to start these projects immediately. The longer that we delay, we're talking about millions of dollars every year for projects to be completed. And the board is well aware of other middle schools that are now coming in, $20 million higher than what they were originally proposed. And so us getting started with this, really tomorrow, is going to be in our best interest. And then Mr. Riddick will be able to see if some things change, mainly with the cost of steel, installation, others, if we can add 50 more seats.
The reason why I asked of Dr. Gordon, because those designs have not been fully designed, in my opinion, from my understanding. I didn't know if that was something that we could go to the architect and see, what could we get, or what's the most we can get in with this price that we're willing to pay or that we're able to pay. However, that gives me another reason to go back and speak with our leaders to see what type of collaborations we can achieve together.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. At this point in time, we are going to take a break. Thank you. We will reconvene at 7:00.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the monthly meeting of the Suffolk Public School Board. We would like to, at this time, call the meeting to order, and we're going to have our pledge of allegiance led by Board Member Heather Howell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we had requests by Board Member Tyron Riddick. We had two action items to be voted on by Board Members to see if we wanted to add these things to the agenda, and so at this time, we will vote on those things. The first request was to a request for a plan of action from the superintendent that addresses the SPS plan to deal with safety issues faced during the school year 21-22 regarding student drop-off and pickup. This is an action item, and so we need a motion as to whether we're going to ask the superintendent to develop this plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we ask the superintendent to develop a plan to address safety issues faced during SY 2122 regarding student drop-off and pickup. Are there questions?
Yes.
There are questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, when I asked this, what I was asking for is what are the plans of Suffolk Public Schools as it relates to the ongoing issues that have been faced by the Division every year regarding parent pickup and drop-off? And that is pretty much what I wanted to know. So my question would be, is how did we get to the point of requesting a plan of action instead of asking him pretty much what was our plan? Because the way it's worded, it's saying we were pretty much asking him to develop something new, as if this is a new problem, and it's not.
Mr. Riddick, when you ask in your comments, you said you wanted the superintendent to develop a plan of action, and you ask in your comments, and then you sent me a request to ask. This has to be something that is voted on by the Board. I took your wording exactly from the request that you sent me, and this is what this request is typed from what you sent to me. It has to be voted on by the Board, because when I polled the Board, which is what I do, I polled the first few Board Members, because you only need one person to say they're not interested in this, before we ask the superintendent and the staff to gather together a plan of action for this. I polled the Board. If someone objects to it, this is our policy, if someone objects to this, whatever it is that you're asking for, then we ask Board Members. I asked, when I polled the first few Board Members, I realized that it wasn't going anywhere, so I put it on the agenda to see if anyone was interested in this information. The Board is ready to vote on this to see if anyone is interested in this information.
Well, I would like to invoke a point of order.
May I respond to your question since you asked a question, if you want an answer to it? Each school addresses these problems, each principal addresses these problems according to the problems at their school. The superintendent doesn't address parking problems or pickup problems at a school. If there is a general problem, a general issue at a school, then they would have a general one, but the problems at, say, a school in your borough might not be the same problem as a school in someone else's borough, and it's up to the principal of the school to develop a plan for that particular school. There would not be a general plan for every school, and so that's why we're voting on it. And at this point-
Correct, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded, and if you have a question-
Yes, I do have a question. Have we discarded the Board policy that stipulates if the work is expected to exceed one hour, then and only then is the whole entire Board opinion? Have we done away with that?
If it's a plan of action that you want the superintendent to develop, that will take more than one hour, and it's not an existing report.
So who made that determination that it would take more than 60 minutes to tell me what's already in place?
Mr. Riddick, that is not the wording that's in your question. It's, did the Board want a plan of action from the superintendent? It takes more than an hour to develop a plan of action.
Madam Chair, I see this as a play to not give me the information that I asked for, because we only have one staff, and that is the superintendent. I cannot, in my capacity, go to a building principal and ask, why do we have traffic coming from Pioneer Road onto Route 58 with 18-wheelers coming? I can't ask, I would be out of the scope of my duties as a Board Member. So I followed the policy, and now the policy is being changed to suit whoever narrative it is. If the plan already exists at the building level, I don't see how sending an email to the building principals, asking them to send over their policy, and forwarding the email to Board Members, how does that take 60 minutes? I can't see that.
You ask for Board Members, and Board Members have the opportunity, at this point, to respond as to whether they want this information or not, and it's time for them to vote on it. They have the right to vote as to whether they're interested in the information that you requested on their behalf.
Attorney Waller, I would request to you, is the policy properly being implemented regarding the projected of staff hours exceeding 60 minutes here? Because that would determine my next recommendation.
I think that we may be mixing two things together that are totally different. The polling requirement under your policy is when someone has asked for something to be added to the agenda for the Board to discuss. When that should happen, the Chair is then authorized to poll the other Board Members to find out their desire to have that added to the agenda. If one Board Member objects, then it goes to the full Board for a vote. That's when you're looking at having an item added to the agenda. There's another policy that deals with requests for information, not a public record, but a request for information. If there's a request for information, and a determination is made that it's going to take more than 60 minutes to compile the information, to gather information, that is not already existing in a public record, then that will also require a vote by the Board. I think what I'm hearing here is that, what you're telling us, Board Member Riddick, is that your initial request, you did not intend your initial request to be asking the superintendent to develop a plan, as it was asking him to indicate what steps he has in place to deal with the drop-off, pickup issues that may be faced by various schools. If that is your request, then it would be appropriate to poll the Board Members, because you'll be asking for something to be added to the agenda for there to be some discussion about the superintendent's plan for that, how he plans to deal with that. If you were asking for an informational item, then it could fall under that 60-minute rule. So I think that we're sort of bringing these-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we had request by board member Tyron Riddick, we had two action items to be voted on by board members to see if we wanted to add these things to the agenda. And so at this time, we will vote on those things. The first request was to a request for a plan of action from the superintendent that addresses the SPS plan to deal with safety issues faced during the school year 21-22 regarding student drop-off and pickup. This is an action item, and so we need a motion as to whether we're going to ask the superintendent to develop this plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we ask the superintendent to develop a plan to address safety issues faced during SY 21-22 regarding student drop-off and pickup. Are there questions?
Yes.
There are questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam-
Ms. Riddick?
Madam Chair, when I asked this, what I was asking for is what are the plans of Suffolk Public Schools as it relates to the ongoing issues that have been faced by the Division every year regarding parent pickup and drop-off? And that is pretty much what I wanted to know. So my question would be, is how did we get to the point of requesting a plan of action instead of asking him pretty much what was our plan? Because the way it's worded, it's saying we were pretty much asking him to develop something new, as if this is a new problem, and it's not.
Mr. Riddick, when you ask in your comments, you said you wanted the superintendent to develop a plan of action, and you ask in your comments, and then you sent me a request to ask. This has to be something that is voted on by the board. I took your wording exactly from the request that you sent me. And this is what this request is typed from what you sent to me. It has to be voted on by the board, because when I polled the board, which is what I do, I polled the first few board members, because you only need one person to say they're not interested in this, before we ask the superintendent and the staff to gather together a plan of action for this. I polled the board. If someone objects to it, this is our policy, if someone objects to this, whatever it is that you're asking for, then we ask board members. I asked, when I polled the first few board members, I realized that it wasn't going anywhere, so I put it on the agenda to see if anyone was interested in this information. The board is ready to vote on this, to see if anyone is interested in this information.
Well, I would like to invoke a point of order.
May I respond to your question since you asked a question, if you want an answer to it? Each school addresses these problems, each principal addresses these problems according to the problems at their school. The superintendent doesn't address parking problems or pickup problems at a school. If there is a general problem, a general issue at a school, then they would have a general one, but the problems at, say, a school in your borough might not be the same problem as a school in someone else's borough. And it's up to the principal of the school to develop a plan for that particular school. There would not be a general plan for every school. And so, that's why we're voting on it. And at this point-
Correct, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded, and if you have a question-
Yes, I do have a question. Have we discarded the board policy that stipulates if the work is expected to exceed one hour, then, and only then, is the whole entire board opinion? Have we done away with that?
If it's a plan of action that you want the superintendent to develop, that will take more than one hour, and it's not an existing report.
So who made that determination that it would take more than 60 minutes to tell me what's already in place?
Mr. Riddick, that is not the wording that's in your question. It's, did the board want a plan of action from the superintendent? It takes more than an hour to develop a plan of action.
Madam Chair, I see this as a play to not give me the information that I asked for, because we only have one staff, and that is the superintendent. I cannot, in my capacity, go to a building principal and ask, why do we have traffic coming from Pioneer Road onto Route 58 with 18-wheelers coming? I can't ask, I would be out of the scope of my duties as a board member. So I followed the policy, and now the policy is being changed to suit whoever narrative it is. If the plan already exists at the building level, I don't see how sending an email to the building principals, asking them to send over their policy, and forwarding the email to board members, how does that take 60 minutes? I can't see that.
You ask for board members, and board members have the opportunity at this point to respond as to whether they want this information or not, and it's time for them to vote on it. They have the right to vote as to whether they're interested in the information that you requested on their behalf.
Attorney Waller, I would request to you, is the policy properly being implemented regarding the projected of staff hours exceeding 60 minutes here? Because that would determine my next recommendation.
I think that we may be mixing two things together that are totally different. The polling requirement under your policy is when someone has asked for something to be added to the agenda for the board to discuss. When that should happen, the chair is then authorized to poll the other board members to find out their desire to have that added to the agenda. If one board member objects, then it goes to the full board for a vote. That's when you're looking at having an item added to the agenda. There's another policy that deals with requests for information, not a public record, but a request for information. If there's a request for information, and a determination is made that is going to take more than 60 minutes to compile the information, to gather information, that is not already existing in a public record, then that will also require a vote by the board. I think what I'm hearing here is that, what you're telling us, Board Member Riddick, is that your initial request, you did not intend your initial request to be asking the superintendent to develop a plan, as it was asking him to indicate what steps he has in place to deal with the drop-off, pickup issues that may be faced by various schools. If that is your request, then it would be appropriate to poll the board members, because you'll be asking for something to be added to the agenda, for there to be some discussion about the superintendent's plan for that, how he plans to deal with that. If you were asking for an informational item, then it could fall under that 60-minute rule. So I think that we're sort of bringing these two things together that are really unrelated to one another. So I guess the question really goes back to, are you asking for the superintendent to develop a plan, which is what I hear the chair interpreting your request to be, or are you just asking the superintendent to share with the board what his plan is currently? Not that he has to develop one, but whether or not he already has one.
In my email that was sent on August 15th at 6:41 PM, it states, "I also would like the board to request a plan of action from our superintendent that addresses the Suffolk Public Schools' plan to deal with safety issues faced during 21-22 regarding student drop-off and pickup." What was just shared with me is that the schools already have a plan. So the plan of action is at the school level, it's already developed, and I'm asking for information. I'm not asking that we have a full-blown-out discussion. This is asking for information, and it's, it is being toyed with words, where if there was any ambiguity as to what I meant, the following email could have, could you clarify? But that wasn't the following email. So I'm just asking for the information. If it already exists, why not give it to me? If you have to develop it, then say so. But to have to jump through these hurdles for this information, where you have cars riding out on Godwin Boulevard and on 58, and we're asking for plans, and as I said in the meeting, I know things have been put into place, but can I get something, what is it being put into place? So when called upon by citizens, we know. And that's where I am. I'm asking for information, and I'm being toyed with in obtaining the information. That's the way I feel. I don't know if that's people's intentions, but that's the way I feel.
I'm going to respond, and then I'm going to go ahead with the vote. The response is this. First of all, I'm not toying with anybody, I'm following the rules. I don't have time to toy with people, because I don't play games. The rules are these. As I listen to what you said, and you said from 2021 to 2022, not this year, not a plan of action, but a report on what happened last year, because that was last year. So you want a report on what was done last year, you don't want a plan of action for what's done this year, because that's what this is, 2021 to 2022.
Yes.
At any rate, at any rate, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I need clarity on-
I have a question.
I need clarity on him answering that question before I vote. Is he asking for what was in place last year, or is he asking for something to be addressed and handled differently this year?
Well, we don't have anything in writing as to what was done last year. So you do need that information to make an accurate assessment, so you know what to go forward with. So when I ask for the information, more than likely, the parking lots have not changed. So that way, we have time to communicate in advance to parents how we're going to handle XYZ. I just wanted the information, so we know what's going on. I'm not saying that, you know, the staff didn't do anything, I don't want my words to be misconstrued. However, what I am saying is, the information already exists from the last school year. And I'm pretty sure that most of our building principals did address this in their planning, because they already had parent pickup and drop-off committees. I just wanted to know what were our actions, because we don't have the authority to go and ask a building administrator, what are your actions? That's all I wanted.
Madam Chair-
Yes.
May I ask a question or emphasize? There was some information on the website about student pickup and drop-off instructions for that. I noticed that. So, Mr. Riddick, were you aware of that?
Just as majority of the parents who were messaging me were not aware, not saying that the information was not there, they just wasn't aware. But if that would have been the response that I got, I could have relayed that information back to parents when asked, but I wasn't given the opportunity to get that information. And I don't have the opportunity at all times to go and go to our website and search for these things. I just requested information as to how was this situation handled, so when asked about it this year, we can give fact as this is what this school is doing. So we could alleviate some of the safety concerns, driving down 58 and seeing kids and families spurring out into the interstate with trucks coming by speeding. It's alarming.
I'm gonna, do you have, Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the stuff is on, the information is on the website, but also, I know I've probably been bugging Dr. Gordon to death about information about the drop-off pick, you know, the pickup and the drop-off. And as of this week, I've seen with my eyes that he has had people at certain schools that have that problem, and to make sure that things are going to be put in place and see what he has to do to make things better. So I've, you know, I've been talking with him, and I know things are in the works. And one of my schools, Nansman Parkway, it's better, it's not like it was, and then they're making other adjustments. So I know things are being put in place for this year, because that's what we're into right now, this year.
Well, let me get back to what the question is. The question is, do we want a plan of action from the superintendent that addresses the safety issues from 21-22? That is the question that the vote is on the floor for. Do we want a plan of action? So let's address the question that's on the floor, because I'm sure that parents got directions with regard to pickup this year. The question is, do we want a plan of action that addresses what happened last year? That is the question that's on the floor that we're being asked to vote for. If you don't have a question about that, or if you want it, or if you don't, is what we're asking you at this point in time.
Madam Chair, I would like to have a point of privilege for one minute, not exceed one minute. In order to address 22-23, we need to know what was implemented in 21-22. That way, we can see what worked, what could we do better, how could we help communicate this to those who we represent? So in order to make a sound direction of as to what we would like to see as a board to the superintendent, from my perspective, it is essential to know what the schools did last year. So I would say yes.
Thank you. So board members, are you ready to vote? This is asking you if you, as a board member, would like to have it. Okay? That's all we're asking right now.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
No.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram? Board Chair Brooks Bug?
No.
Motion passed?
The next thing is Board Member Riddick. We want a request to evaluate, if this is written incorrectly, let me know, to evaluate our parent advisory committees for school year 21-22, and that we create an evaluation form during the work session for 2022-23 school year. This is an action item. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we have a, we evaluate our parent advisory committees for school year 21-22, and that we create an evaluation form during the work session for 2022-23 school year. Are there questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. Is there currently an evaluation process of our parent advisory committees in place? And if so, is there a matrix in which we can monitor them?
No, I can assure you that there's not. We don't evaluate our, we have not evaluated our volunteers who come to help us as advisory
Madam Chair, before we vote, I would like to exercise a point of privilege. My reason for making this recommendation is because if we're going to move forward and continue with parent advisory committees, we want to make sure that our committees are doing what it is we desire for them to do, that we're moving in the right direction. And the only way you can do that is to properly assess the committee. Did the committee achieve its goals and the purpose of the committee? If not, what's the purpose to continue to have the committee on the record if it's not required by law, if the committee is not functioning as it should? And in times past, it has been difficult to get citizens to serve on committees, because the citizens have come back to me and said they were not carrying out the task that they thought they had signed up for. And that's concerning to me. When we ask parents and community stakeholders to volunteer their time, we want to make sure that it's fruitful and not a waste of their time. So that's why I'm requesting the second request.
Any other comments? Board members, are you ready to vote?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
No.
Board Member Mayo?
No.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
No.
Board Chair Brooks Bug?
No.
Motion failed.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Point of order.
Yes.
Madam Chair, with the first vote that took place, we requested that we add item one to the agenda, and I don't see that added under New Business, unless we voted to go ahead and give the directive, but it's listed for us, add items to the agenda.
Well, add it as item five under New Business. I know. It will be, she hasn't done it yet.
Yes, the reason why I stated it, because the motion said to approve the agenda as presented, and that change wasn't reflected.
And at that rate, I move that we approve the agenda with the addition of-
Of item one.
Of item one.
And it'll be added as five-
And it will be added as five under New Business.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as amended. Are there questions?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Bug?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We do not have any citizens on agenda topics, so we will move Mr. Superintendent to the Good News Report.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I'm going to call to the podium our community engagement and communications officer, Ms. Anthea Dickens, for the Good News Report. She will share information about our Virginia Region Two Teacher of the Year, some, one of our SPS alumni that is out doing great things, highlights of our 2022 community bus tours, back-to-school community donations, SPS in the news with a focus on our emotional well-being of students. We also have a special recognition that I will do, as well as calendar of special events. I will also give the board a brief report on the first few days of school. Ms. Dickens?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of our board, and those here with us this All right, I'd like to start our Good News Report tonight by highlighting Mr. Jason Bartholomew, our teacher from Nansman River High School. On Tuesday, August 30th, our Virginia State Superintendent paid a special surprise visit to Nansman River High School to name Mr. Jason Bartholomew, our division's first-ever Regional Teacher of the Year. Mr. Bartholomew teaches economics and personal finance at Nansman River. And for the last 10 years, he's taught here in Suffolk and has made a lasting impact on his students, his school, and our division overall. He will continue on to represent over 100,000 teachers from our Hampton Roads area to compete to become Virginia's 2023 Teacher of the Year. We'll move forward to our SPS alumni highlights and recognize Ms. Talisha Anderson Cheeks. Talisha Anderson Cheeks is a graduate from Lakeland High School and weight loss specialist with her own practice right here in Suffolk. After graduating from Suffolk Public Schools, she received her Bachelor of Science from Norfolk State University and her Master of Science in Nursing from South University in Savannah, Georgia. She is a board-certified family nurse practitioner. At her practice, she specializes in pharmacological treatment, weight loss management, and behavioral nutrition coaching, amongst others. And her experiences include bariatric weight loss surgery, medical weight loss, general surgery, and colon and rectal surgery. As a consultant, her goal is to bridge the gap for a successful weight loss journey and motivate and inspire her clients to pursue a healthier life path for the best possible health. Ms. Talisha Cook, our Lakeland High School alumni highlight tonight. All right, from August 25th through September 1st, Suffolk Public Schools held our community bus tours, a vision from our division superintendent. The purpose of the bus tours was to allow our staff to engage and interact with our community and to share in the excitement of welcoming our students and parents back to school. And these are just a few photos from various schools that were out in the community, handing out back-to-school supplies, engaging with the students. All right, several community organizations gave back to our students as we prepared to reopen our doors on September 6th. Thank you to Crossroads Treatment Center, Innovative Veterans Outreach, and New Creation Methodist Church, just to name a few, for donating school supplies. Kingsfork High School alumni and former member of the Bulldogs Track and Field Team, Michaela McFadden, held a volunteer event at Kingsfork High School, which enabled 40 students from the area to receive free school supplies. And Suffolk Public Schools in the news, so our Dr. Rodney Brown, our Chief of Administrative Services, and Ms. Cindy Devers highlighted the steps that SPS is taking to focus on the emotional well-being of our students. Rhythm is an app that allows students to do an individual daily check-in to start their day, sharing where they are mentally, emotionally, physically, socially, and energy-wise. It provides a safe space for students to say, "I am not okay." It also allows for teachers to more effectively and efficiently provide resources to connect with students and to offer assistance. Only a teacher, counselor, or administrator can see the students' responses. Additionally, in August, College Board awarded 62,000 students from across the country with academic- from across the country with academic scholars for excelling in their classrooms and on College Board assessments. More than 180 students from all 50 states were eligible to apply. Colleges and scholarship programs identified students awarded the following: So national African-American, Hispanic, Indigenous, and/or rural or small-town recognition through College Board Student Search Services. So tonight, we recognize the following students for receiving these recognition. Raven Cooper from Lakeland High School, and the following students from Kingsfork High School: Amira Palmer, Ashley Martin, Jalen Downing, Noel Ingram, Pride Camusia, and Sydney Barnes. And Dr. Gordon, I'll segue back to you so that you can do your special recognition tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Dickens. Last month, as a part of our Good News Report, we highlighted two of our outstanding lead teachers here in Suffolk Public Schools, Ms. Dawn Roundtree and Ms. Sarah McDonald, for being two of 59 teachers in the Project Lead the Way programs across the country that were recognized as outstanding teachers. And so with the school year being started, I've asked Ms. McDonald and Ms. Roundtree to come to the meeting tonight and to be recognized by the board, to also give you a T-shirt, and also give you all the chances to address the board. So Ms. Roundtree, Ms. McDonald, if you wouldn't mind coming down. Ms. Dickens and I are going to take a picture. We definitely want to thank you all for your outstanding work with our engineering and biomedical programs. The fact that Suffolk Public Schools has two of 59 in the entire country shows you about the excellent educators that we have.
I want to say thank you for recognizing me. I feel like I'm nothing without my students. I have the best students. And I am very proud of them. And I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure that they have all the resources and all the things necessary to be successful in Suffolk Public Schools. So thank you.
I want to piggyback on what Sarah just said. We really are nothing without our students. My students were actually the ones that encouraged me to apply. And they're the ones that kind of helped me through the process of the outstanding Project Lead the Way teacher application process and doing all of that. And they were the encouraging, pushing factor. And we, as a team, we have put together, just put so many kids through these programs and given them so many opportunities. But we don't just offer things to the students that we teach. We're also there for any student that has questions about the fields that we promote within our courses. We're there to talk to any student that has, that ever wants to have information. And so we appreciate your support of us, and we'll continue to do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay there for just a moment. Any board members who want to say anything? Because if you don't, I'm going to... Mrs. Mayo?
I would like to thank both of you for your hard work. And I know of your dedication to your students, and we are most proud of the Project Lead the Way programs. Year after year, distinguished programs, outstanding work. And you encourage our students to move on. And for example, at Lakeland, I was at your ceremony, the White Coat Ceremony, last year. And all of the students were headed toward health or medical-related careers. And of course, Ms. Roundtree over at Nansman River, same thing for you. So consistently, you do outstanding work, and we just thank you so much. And our programs are outstanding nationally, and we need to recognize that. Thank you so much.
Any other board members?
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
Everything that Board Member Mayo said, I concur with her. But I just want you to know that it's not just us that recognize you. People all in the community are talking about the great work that you all do and what you're doing for our students. And that's why we are proud to say that we are the best SPS because of great people like you and your dedication to your students. Thank you so much.
And I'm going to say that when I come to your schools, and I do have been to both of your schools and seen your projects and seen your work on the mother of a scientist, my daughter. And I just want to tell you that it's wonderful to see the kinds of things that you all do with your students and to talk to your former students. I got the chance to talk to some of your former students from the engineering program and to hear the kinds of things that they say about what they're doing now. They're the best salespeople for your programs. They really are. So I really enjoy telling people about the wonderful things you all do in Suffolk. And believe me, I tell everybody who will listen about our programs in Suffolk and the kinds of things that we do. And it's because of your work that you put us on the map, and we just appreciate you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go over the calendar of special events, then give the board a brief report on the first days of school, as well as to address some other information. National Arts and Education Week is September 11th through the 17th. National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th. National IT Professionals Day, all of the great work, Michelle Littlefield and his team, September 20th. The First Day of Autumn is September 22nd. Disability Awareness, Bullying Prevention, National Principles Appreciation, National Arts and Humanities, Breast Cancer Awareness, as well as National Cyber Security Awareness, is all next month for the month of October. Our Custodian and Grounds Appreciation Day will be October 2nd. Interim reports will be issued. This is halfway through the first nine weeks on October 6th. National Fire Prevention Week is October 9th through the 15th. Our First Parent-Teacher Conference Day, which will be an early release day for the students, will be October 10th. Grandparents Week and National School Lunch Week are both October 11th through the 15th. And our next School Board meeting, Madam Chair, is October 13th. Today starts our, we completed our first three days of school. And as my team was cheering me on, I had the opportunity to visit all 21 of our schools within the first day. And I can honestly report, you know, we've had a very good opening. And I think one of the great things that I've been so excited about is how the staff and the students have been full of energy and excitement. I also want to thank our entire team, all 2,380 of our employees, for all their hard work, including all of our members of the school administration office team, as the entire teaching and learning team, members of the superintendent's cabinet, et cetera, were out in the schools helping. We have pictures with Dr. Brown answering phones. Dr. Lee actually taught a class today. I mean, these are the things that we were asking for our entire team to be able to chip in, to do in order to make sure that the daily operations of our school was as smooth as possible. I do have some feedback and some tips for a lot of our parents, though. And I guess I will go into more details with this and item five and the new agenda. But our parents must follow our pickup and drop-off procedures. Our cones are there for a reason. We actually added extra staff, not only from the school administration office, but from the buildings to be out in the parking lots to help direct traffic. But this also means that our school community must follow those procedures to the T. If you are veering out of the line, if you are doing things such as removing cones, you can actually cause an accident. And we also had situations where parents were parking their cars and actually getting out of their cars and walking their kids up and leaving their parked cars in the flow. One of the things that we had on our elementary websites and also from information that Ms. P. Shawn shared out at our elementary schools especially, parents, we're asking you, please do not line up any earlier than 30 minutes before dismissal. It will not change how quickly you get through the line. And what it does is it creates a longer period of time where we actually have a bottleneck onto some of the main thoroughfares. We also ask for our school community to please be empathetic and patient with our transportation department. The goal is to make sure that every day it gets a little better. But we can share that we were actually short a few drivers to start the year. We have at least three or four routes that we had to do some double runs because some of those routes weren't covered. We do have additional drivers that are actually coming online next week. And Mr. Privet's team has been forwarding information to Dr. Brown. We really have been tracking, especially for pickups in the afternoon at elementary. One of our main goals for this year is to try to minimize lost instructional time from arrivals, as well as to shorten the amount of time it takes in the afternoons. But when we have those double runs, those are the things that are actually causing some of our buses to be late. I also wanted to discuss, we've had some information about safety in Suffolk Public Schools that seems to be coming to the forefront since our last School Safety Audit Committee and the report that was given. And we received some communication from members of our school community that has contacted the city and also contacted the school division. And a lot of it is definitely based around active shooter training. And I think what is interesting is that active shooter training from the Suffolk Police Department actually occurred at all of our schools this summer, every single one of them. And we also had an active shooter training for our administrators that took place at Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School, where they had the opportunity to observe specifically what it looks like to be involved in an active shooter. Now, you all have heard me say from day one that it's always going to be about safety first here in Suffolk Public Schools. And it's something that I'll never be able to shake because I was involved in an active shooter in 1998, Armstrong High School of Richmond, Virginia. I saved Greg Carter's life, who got shot. So for anyone to ever make the assumption that the school division, this administration, this school board does not care about the safety of our students and our staff, it's a lie. It's a lie. We're going to continue to do everything that we can to ensure that we are putting in safety first. And this includes also making sure that we have some assistance from our school community. Parents that have firearms, please lock up your firearms. We can't have situations where young children have access to firearms. One of the things that we spoke about in our Starcast was about how we've actually purchased heavy metal detectors for our schools. And we're going to pallet those at a few schools to be able to occur. When it comes to active shooter training, all schools have to go through what is called a lockdown drill. That is the active shooter training. Staff and students, it's now second nature. These are actually required by law to make sure that they occur multiple times a year. Our students know what to do. Our staff knows what to do if a school ever has to go on lockdown. We also have a large-scale event that is planned for the future, where we have all of the emergency services in Suffolk, the city of Suffolk, will be involved. That is something that we're going to put forward in a couple of months because it takes time for us to be able to plan. We've installed security cameras and systems so that our administrators, all of them at the central office, have the ability to tap in and look at every camera in a school. But see, these are the things that we're always going to advertise because the less information that you put out there, the less ability the active shooter actually has to find a weakness or a hole. So it's not about the school division holding back information. It's about the school division being smart about what we do. We want to make sure that we keep our kids safe. We want to make sure that we keep our staff safe. In order to be able to do that, this means that everyone must follow our safety procedures, as pickup, as drop-off, as anything that we do. When I was at Kingsfork Middle School yesterday, we were already doing their fire drills. Other safety drills are coming up this month because we have to do some of them before the end of the month. And when it comes to the partnership that we have with the Suffolk Police Department, the partnership that we actually have with the Sheriff Office, we have our police officers out front helping us at our schools. And they leave our secondary schools and come assist in the mornings at our elementary schools and in the afternoon. That's the camaraderie and the collaboration that we're talking about. So those are some of the things, Madam Chair, that we can continue to do. I'll go into some more information about specific aspects of pickup and drop-off later on in the agenda. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The next items on our agenda involve the consent agenda. I'd like to get approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
We moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Are there questions? Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story? Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I want a new business, the new business, the budget calendar is presented for you. Mrs., our finance director is going to come forward, Ms. Wendy Forsman. If there are questions by board members, this is the same budget calendar that we do every year. And it's made available to the public every year so that everyone knows what we do. Do we have a presentation?
Ms. Forsman, is there any information or... So any information or comments you want to be able to give to the board about the budget calendar fiscal year for 2023, 2024? As our budget development process actually begins next month.
Actually, the first emails went out the first day of school. So we already have the request out from the principals to the staff. The principals have two weeks to get the staff information back so that they can then make determinations, and then they will send them on to their respective directors. The italics on the sheet that you have in front of you are the opportunities for stakeholders and the public to give information or comment on the budget. So those ones in italics just represent the times that those folks have opportunities. But everything else is pretty much the same. We've kept everything the same as last year.
Board members, do you have any questions? Board members? Okay. It's the same as it has been. Thank you. We need a motion to accept the calendar?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the budget calendar for the fiscal year 2023, 2024.
We moved and seconded that we approve the budget calendar for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Are there questions? Having none, Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next item is our capital improvement submission of priorities. Each board member received a priorities list last week and was asked to submit any changes in the calendar, in the priorities list that we had from the previous year. All seven... Well, six or seven. Madam Clerk, did you receive seven responses? How many did you... You received six responses. Of those six responses, were there any changes? Anyone change their priorities?
Two submitted changes.
Two submitted changes, okay. Is there any discussion? Or would anyone like to speak to this item? This is an action item before I call for a vote.
The two changes need to speak to their...
To their changes, yes. Okay. Board Member Riddick and Board Member Story, you submitted changes. Would you like to speak to the changes that you made?
No, I do not.
Okay.
It won't make any difference.
Board Member Riddick?
Well, I will address the changes I made. The reason why I reprioritize my recommendations for the CIP is because after assessing the needs of the city, I feel that the focal point should be on building new schools instead of additions. However, I understand that we already have something in the works with Northern Shores, and I don't want to now do anything that will slow that production down. But I, my thought process was if we rebuild a new Nansman Parkway, because Northern Shores... But I, my thought process was if we rebuild a new Nasmun Parkway, because Northern Shores addition is about 14 million and looking at the projected numbers for building a new elementary school, I don't know if we was possible able to just, you know, build a new elementary school, rezone and shift some of our students where they need to be. And the reason why I brought it up is because Nasmun Parkway and Florence Bowser both have students from the downtown area. One school have students who come out of Lake Kennedy Pass, Booker T., Mac Ben, just to get to Nasmun Parkway. When we could shift, if possible, and look at that, I know a study was done before on getting rid of mobile units and it would call for district-wide rezoning. So that's the reason why my priorities has changed. But as I aforementioned, the funding is already available now for the addition on Northern Shores, so I don't want to do anything that would hinder that product, project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riddick. So, Ms. Howell, did you want to address anything? Okay. If, if there is no more discussion, then may I have a motion to approve the capital expenditures?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the capital improvement submission.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We have a list now of citizen advisory committee membership recommendations for 2022, 23. We, this is an action item. You have had the list. Now, this is the list with our additions from the board, our persons that we appointed as well as the persons who have been working on these committees and recommended. This is an action item. I need a recommendation.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there questions or comments?
Yes, I have several questions.
Okay.
I would like to know what marketing strategy or what methods of communications were used to solicit the names that are presented before us today. And then I have a follow-up question after that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Many of the names that are on the citizen advisory committee membership that were recommendations from staff were individuals that actually served on many of these committees last year. We also had other individuals that had contacted staff individually via email and phone call. Some individuals also contacted Ms. Gardner as a school board clerk, showing their interest in this. We did not do any additional marketing because of the additional window that we gave when board member appointments had occurred. We also had members that were part of business partnerships that Mr. Skinner had for career technical education that we had kept on there because these are many of the businesses that give our students internships and hands-on experiences. So we wanted to make sure that we kept the number at the limit that was posted in school board policy for citizen advisory committees, to make sure that we did not exceed those numbers. We also wanted to make sure from the request of the chair that we had some borough representation that was also included and to be able to move forward with having the chair and the rest of the board be able to task these committees with some specific things so they can get started as soon as possible.
Madam Chair, I have another question.
Other question?
If we had a month since our last meeting when we said that there was work that needed to be done and we couldn't extend another month to recruit, why wouldn't we advertise to increase our applicant pool? Because this is a voluntary, voluntary committee, why wouldn't we take advantage of those marketing avenues we have to ensure that we have a great committee and putting them in a great standing point to move forward?
That question is for who?
Whomever would like to answer, whether it's either you or Dr. Gordon.
Are you asking me the question?
I'm asking the question to you and Dr. Gordon, whoever would like to answer would be sufficient. Because I know he's moving at our, he's moving at our direction. So, and these are our committees, so that, Madam Chair, the question will be addressed to you then.
If the question is addressed to me, the board had a time when we were supposed to do this. We've already discussed this. So I'm done with the question. Dr. Gordon explained to you how, he, he just explained to you how they did what they did.
That wasn't my question, Madam Chair. My question was, why wouldn't we take advantage of the additional 30 days to market? He told me how, I'm asking why. So those are two different questions. I wanted to know why we didn't take advantage of the additional days that we had. Because also in that meeting, it was said that these committees needed to start working in the last past 30 days. So I wanted to know also what work has been done in those last 30 days. Because our policy is stating one thing and our practices has changed since how, since the way we did this in years past. We used to get not just the names, but we also got the resume. And it sparked conversation because there was a person who wanted to serve on the CIAC Committee who didn't live in the city. So now we are just being submitted names. And these are things that I brought to the attention of the board and I'm glad we're able to have this discussion publicly. My question is, why didn't we take advantage of the time? And now I would like to add a compound on to that. Who authorized the change in our practice? Because I don't remember the board taking a vote to change our practice.
One, nobody authorized any change. There wasn't a change. It was the same practice we had before. And in truth, the, the conversation that we had with Mr. Mitnick and the person who was not on our board with the CIAC Committee was done in public because we had, Mr. Mitnick was on the screen when we had that conversation. And that was a totally different conversation from who lives in the city and who didn't live in the city. There weren't people from outside the city. So the practice did not change at all. But at any rate, if, are there other questions from other board members?
Sure.
Yes.
So.
Her mic's not on.
She's got it on there. The green light's on.
I have it on. So the school board could not take an additional month. Who is superior over the superintendent administration, they could have an extra month to, to recruit, but the school board members could not have an extra month. Did I get that right?
Mrs. Story?
Oh, I know.
And Mr. Riddick.
Did I get it right? It's just yes or no. Did I get that right?
It's not yes or no because the school board had all the time that they needed and had several months to decide who you wanted to be on the committees. With regard to resumes, if people were being reappointed to the committee who had served on the committee before, they didn't need to resubmit a resume because we already had their resumes. That was one issue that was, that was there. If you had a list of people who were there, they were there. When we did this year before last, as I recall, my memory is pretty good, we had our seven people, each of us had one person to appoint from a borough, from our borough. And the purpose was, as you and I both sat down with the policy committee and made this determination that we would have one person, we had our one person for each committee. That was what we were supposed to do. Any other people, it doesn't matter. It really doesn't because that was not our job, that was not our function. And everybody, at least on the right side of me, understood that, that we had one person that we were supposed to add to the committee. And the other persons on the committee were added who worked on the committees and who were added by staff. It was not our job to advertise anymore and to get anymore. We were supposed to, as school board members, add one person from each of our boroughs. As a matter of fact, I gave the opportunity to add other people or to have other people, especially on the Title I Committee, because I didn't have any Title I schools, so that somebody else could be added who had Title I schools or more Title I schools in our borough. So please, let's not rehash this discussion because we've had it.
Madam Chair?
We've had that discussion and, and the question has been called.
Madam Chair, I have a discussion.
Mrs. Jenkins called for the question because we've had this discussion.
Okay, I'll take my time and my board member.
Madam Clerk.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
No.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item four, the Resolution 22-23-6, a resolution for the school board for the city of Suffolk, Virginia, approving an award to RRMM Architects to provide architectural and engineering services for the design of a new middle school pursuant to requests for proposals issued by Suffolk Public Schools. This is an action item. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the award of the school board for the architects RRMM to provide architectural and engineering services for the design of a new middle school. Other questions?
I have one, yes.
Yes.
Were, was an RFP put out to other architectural firms for the work? And I, so, I also, I, I don't, it might be, but it's very interesting. I think the public should know that for the last umpteenth years, the only one who ever gets the bid is RRMM. Year after year after year after year after year, it's like no other architects exist in the entire city or tidewater area. There's all sorts of other architectural firms, but only RRMM gets it. I think that's pretty interesting. Just my comment.
Maybe they do a good job.
Maybe they get, maybe someone gets kicked ass.
There is a question, is there?
Madam Chair, I've asked Mr. Anthony Hines, our purchasing manager, to come to the podium to explain the RFP process and how RRMM was the selected company. Mr. Hines?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, members of the school board. To specifically address Mrs. Story's question, we did actually put out a request for proposals on July the 5th and received proposals through August 2nd at 2:00. A total of 3,985 vendors were notified through the EVO procurement system, 3,098 were non-SWAM and 887 were small women in minority businesses. Of that outreach, that is through the EVO procurement system, which is put through the state, we did receive a total of six proposals, of which three were made in the shortlist through grading processes found in the RFP. Interviews were then conducted and it was actually a unanimous selection of, of a five-person panel to make that selection. If I may also, this may not necessarily ask, answer the question about this particular item, but I do want to add one piece of context about architects to the question that Ms. Story had, is we do have a term agreement also where we have been using Mosley Architects and also Timmins Group on a number of our projects recently. So we do use a few other architects in terms of some of the additional work that we've been having done. So I do, I know that might be a concern of yours, I just want to make sure I address that concern, ma'am.
How many of our past schools have been done by RRMM?
I can only speak to, since I've been here for six, six years, we had the two new schools that came in that was selected prior to my arrival. So I don't know that, that answer in terms of prior to that. I really have not dug that deep into it. I look at each procurement activity as a fresh one, quite frankly, ma'am. So I, I really don't know the answer to that. I do know that, like I say, with the new term contract, that was also selected by a committee which did incorporate a new, a provider, Mosley Architects, and their set of consultants, like Timmins Group, for example, they've been doing a lot of, of the drainage work and things of that nature, football fields, for example, not necessarily going through RRMM if that's, you know, that's your concern. But I did want to at least address that those are the only two architects, you know, actually we did have, the operations center was, only had two vendors that, that participated in that. And that was, that did also go to RRMM, but it was only two that actually participated.
So I think it's known that Suffolk Public Schools goes with RRMM and I wouldn't be surprised if they don't submit because RRMM is always chosen. And I absolutely am not questioning your integrity about putting out the proposals and because I know that's, I know that that's done, but I do think it's very odd that all of our large projects, all of our buildings, all of our schools, one architectural firm gets it and gets the builder and et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just making a comment, I don't really need any feedback, I'm just making a statement of fact that RRMM pops up all the time, they buy the school board dinner when we go to VSBA conferences, they buy dinner for everybody, they invite us to their table. And it's just pretty interesting that RRMM always gets these contracts.
I can only speak to the process that we went through.
I know, and I, I'm not questioning your process at all, Mr. Hines.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, you did. And in truth, every vendor invites, buy the school board dinner and they give dinners at VSBA and at NSBA and at every conference that people go to. So it's not a matter of choosing them because they buy dinner, because I don't even think you get invited to the dinner and none of us are on the panel for selection. So let's make that clear. You may have a seat. Thank you very much.
I purposely stay away from the conference. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not on the panel for selection, by the way. Are there any other questions? Okay. Are we ready for the vote?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
No.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now, we have already actually voted on this. Mr. Riddick, your request for a plan of action, so did you want the plan of action tonight? Because we've already voted on the request for a plan of action from the superintendent and said, yes, we want that. So my question is, at this point, and you talked about putting it on the agenda, but if you want the request for a plan of action regarding last year, and we've already voted on the request for a plan of action, then that would be something that would be submitted to you?
Madam Chair?
Or do you want a discussion of this at this point? Tell me what you want because I'm not understanding it right now.
I am baffled if this plan can be submitted as early as tonight.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Considering all of the stuff I was dragged through.
Well, like I said, nobody drug you through anything. We ask you, what, you insisted that this be item five, what do you want us to do at this point because we've already voted on it?
If, if the information can be sent over to me, that would be great. I'm not asking for discussion, but.
Okay.
My point of privilege would be.
That's all I wanted to know. That's all I wanted to know. If, Mr. Superintendent, would you send that, send that to all of the board members because the majority of the board said they wanted it? So when this report is ready, send it to the board members so we can move on to.
There has to be one correction on the agenda, Madam Chair. It's currently listed as an action item, there should be an info item. And I need, need to have a follow-up question to Mr. Riddick. You just stated that you would like this to be sent in an email, so your email will address what was done last year and the changes that we made this year, correct?
Yeah, he just wants to know what was.
Yes, sir, if you could just give the information.
No problem. No problem.
To all of us? That's what, we voted on it.
That's what I just said, yes.
We all voted on it. Okay, and I believe you voted yes, so to all of us.
I'm sorry, I just want to be sure this isn't just an info item.
Uh huh, but we voted on it, so it's an action item. It's not an info item, it's an action item, because we voted on it.
Under new business?
We voted on it before we even started.
Point of order, Madam Chair, I believe another vote will have to take place because what we voted on was to put it on the agenda, and now that it's on the agenda, we as a board will have to vote as to whether you want to receive the information, in which forms you would like to receive it, whether it's a board presentation or just an email.
Mr. Wall, when I ask if we wanted to, if the board wanted to, as a matter of fact, I said it out loud, if the board wanted to request a plan of action, did I not say that? If the board wanted to request a plan of action from the superintendent, I read this, and we voted on it, and the majority of the vote voted that they wanted to request a plan of action from the superintendent that addresses the SPS Plan to Deal with Safety Issues Faced in SY 2122 Regarding Student Drop Off and Pickup. That was what they voted on, and they voted, the majority voted, yes, they did.
It is a two-step process. The first step is to just get it on the agenda, so that initial vote was simply to add it.
Okay.
So, there does need to be another vote to actually act on it.
All right.
And in fact, some of the members that voted to have it added are not necessarily required to vote to do it. I mean, you know, it's one vote to get it on the agenda, it's another vote to actually carry it out.
Now, we're voting to do what? What's your motion?
Madam Chair, it's your meeting. Go for it, Madam Chair.
No, it's not, I need to know what we're asking. Let's have a motion to, as to whether you want it or not.
Madam Chair...
Want the report?
Madam Chair, I move that we receive the report via email.
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
Just to be clear, that motion was to receive the report via email. Is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, the motion, I've been advised to do so, that we receive the 2122 report and the changes that the superintendent's staff has implemented, as he said, for this year via email.
Okay, that's an amended motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, just to be clear, the amended motion is for, to receive the plan of action for the 202122 report and the changes that the superintendent and staff implemented this year via email?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mrs. Story seconded it.
Got it. Okay. Board members, please vote.
Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
No.
Board Member Mayo?
No.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
No.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay. Now, let's, we have a citizen who would like to speak. Madam Clerk, just before you come forward, Madam Clerk.
It is the intent of the School Board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so in the order in which they sign up to speak, that persons in attendance may observe and hear the proceedings of the board without distraction, and that the members of the board and board employees are able to transact the business of the board with minimum disruption. Any persons addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments to matters germane to the business of the School Board of the City of Suffolk; two, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and six, refrain from making any comment regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceeding. Expressive activities include but are not limited to, petitioning, picketing, displaying signs or posters, solicitation, demonstrating, pamphlet distribution, and conducting polls shall not be permitted in the waiting areas or corridors of any school buildings in which the board is meeting. Persons addressing the board may deliver to the board or its clerk written materials including reports, statements, exhibits, letters, or signed petitions, and may also make use of any chart or graph during their verbal presentation. The School Board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comment but will not comment, deliberate, or take action on them. The School Board Chair may direct the superintendent to investigate items and report back to the School Board at a subsequent meeting. The chairman or presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chairman or superintendent, a city police officer shall act as sergeant at arms at tonight's board meeting. That officer shall, under the direction of the chairman, superintendent, or other presiding officer, have charge of the auditorium, the waiting areas, and corridors adjacent thereto, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Thank you. Mrs. Alicia Saringer would like to speak to the board on the topic of continuing discrimination and unprofessional behavior of staff bullying, bus issues, and not getting information. Mrs. Saringer, would you please come forward? You have five minutes to speak. Or Ms. Saringer? We are going to move forward with comments by board members. Okay. Ms. Howell?
Good evening and welcome back, SPS. First, I want to make mention, a parent contacted me earlier about being delayed dropping her student off, actually here, and her student being marked tardy, and to clarify, as I did with Dr. Gordon and saying for everyone to hear, that there is typically a grace period anyway for the whole first week of school with everybody adjusting to new routines and rhythms, but if you find your student has been marked tardy and you are in fact in the drop-off line waiting to get to the door, simply it is advised you contact the building administrator and then CC Ron Lee. And I'm glad to see the bus tours back this year, when I was teaching here, we did that every August before convocation, and I think it really gives perspective what our kids are coming to school with, because that very much has influence on what we see as their behavior and the product that they turn into us. And so, it is really important information for teachers to have, especially when we don't necessarily live in the communities that we serve and the buildings that we Comments are brief tonight because we are just getting back to school and it is day three, it feels like sometimes day 333 already, but I am glad that things have transpired the way they have this week. I've had some parents reach out with questions very respectfully, I've tracked down the information specific to those families and hopefully provided a timely response, and I do appreciate that Dr. Gordon is very responsive to me. So, if you have a question, ask me, if I don't know the answer, I will find it. Please join the PTA at your school if your school has one, your support is very much needed in a variety of ways, and also keep your eyes and ears open for ways you can participate at the building level in your child's education. To all the SPS teachers, thank you for returning to the trenches and locking in for another year of hard work, but blessing our students in the ways that only you can do. Have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Board Member Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to thank those who presented tonight, Dr. Branch, and those who are on Dr. Gordon's staff and his team. We have an amazing qualified team members, and we appreciate all the work that you do. The past two weeks, I have attended many back-to-school functions honoring our teachers with Teacher of the Year, our new and returning teachers with different breakfasts, and it was all excitement and chatter of anticipation of their students returning on the 6th. I too have gotten many questions from parents because they, some parents just have questions they don't know the answer to, but thanks to Dr. Gordon, I direct them directly to him, and he responds quickly with the answers. I also had the pleasure of visiting all of the three high school football practices along with my husband, and we witnessed some amazing athletes from all three high schools. And when I, we went to Lakeland, we had the privilege of seeing the brand-new state-of-the-art football field and track field, which is professionally auto turf, I mean, what is it? What is it?
Artificial turf.
Artificial turf, and it was just like going out on the, it's not the Redskins anymore, but the commander's field, it is amazing, and I challenge all of you all who are in here, you've probably already been, but those who are listening, to go and check that field out. And then, at their first game, they won. Our teams are, have been amazing with winning their games. We've been to all of their football games so far, even the JV, they're doing a tremendous job, and like my board member, Ms. Howell, said, we need the parents to get involved with their kids. That makes a big difference. We, you know, we see the, we saw the students, the athletes, you know, waiting for the bus to take them home, and, you know, we want them to be happy when they go home because they have a parent or a guardian, they are welcoming them, and want to know what their day was like. And the same thing I posted on yesterday, make sure you give them a little joy and a little hug before they get on the bus, because they can think about that when maybe they may have a hard day, knowing that they have something great to go back home to. It's our job to encourage our kids. I also want to say that, let me get back to my notes, again, I alluded to this earlier in the meeting, thank you, Dr. Gordon, for allowing me to bug you the past year or so about the drop-off and pickup, and because I know you're already working on this, I know that you're going to give us an update report, because you've only been to a few schools to check it out, but you've been there along with staff, because I saw it this morning at Nansen Parkway, observing the drop-off, and then this afternoon for the pickup. So, you're doing the work already, and I just want to give you the opportunity to go to those troubling schools that have the troubles with the drop-off and the pickup, so you can, your team can go and analyze, and you have another professional team that's going to come up with a plan. So, I already know that you're doing what you, what we're asking you to do, and you're not doing it to keep it to yourself, you're going to give us a report. Again, I applaud all the teachers, the staff, for everything that you're doing. Again, if the school has a PTA, join the PTA, if they don't, let's create one. Every school should have a PTA. It's very important, and thank you so much.
I messed up and took her off. Her off, they got her. Okay, so I'll call her. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to pause for a minute, Ms. Mayo. We do have a speaker who was, there was an error, and we have a speaker, so if you'll read the statement for the speaker, yes, and she's going to come forward, and I'm going to read all the stuff that she would like to talk about. If you will read the statement.
It is the intent of the School Board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so in the order in which they sign up to speak, that persons in attendance may observe and hear the proceedings of the board without distraction, and that the members of the board and board employees are able to transact the business of the board with minimal disruption. Any persons addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments to matters germane to the business of the School Board of the City of Suffolk; two, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence to breach or breach of the peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and six, refrain from making any comments regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceedings. Expressive activities including but not limited to, petitioning, picketing, displaying signs or posters, solicitation, demonstrating, pamphlet distribution, and conducting polls shall not be permitted in the waiting areas or corridors of any school building in which the board is being, is, board is meeting. Persons addressing the board may deliver to the board or its clerk written materials including reports, statements, exhibits, letters, or signed petitions, and may also make use of any chart, graph, chart or graph during their verbal presentation. The School Board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comment but will not comment, deliberate, or take action on them. The School Board Chair may direct the superintendent to investigate items and report back to the School Board at a subsequent meeting. The chair or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chairman or superintendent, a city police officer shall act as sergeant at arms at tonight's board meeting. That officer shall, under the direction of the chairman, superintendent, or other presiding officer, have charge of the auditorium, the waiting areas, and corridors adjacent thereto, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Okay, we do have a speaker. I'm told that the names were reversed of the person who was not coming and the person who is coming. Angela Kilgore has signed up to speak. Please give your name and address when you come up. She wants to speak on security of our school's disrespect and reverse racism that has been put on display and shown towards white conservative parents by selective members of our School Board and the new administrative staff. They are putting in place frivolous spending that is doing nothing to better educate our children or decrease the demands that continue to be placed on our teachers. You may speak.
Hi, I'd like to say good evening to each of you, each of the members, parents, teachers, and staff. Welcome back to a new school year. My name's Angela Kilgore. My address is 1433 Redwood Court. I've been living in Suffolk for 21 years, and we decided, me and my husband, after years of military service, to settle down here in this wonderful city. During those years, we have watched as this education system continues to decline. The leadership of this board has swapped back and forth between the vice chair and the chairman. Bad decisions have been made, and we were hoping for a change. Project Veritas recently exposed, did an exposee, opening up our eyes, and hopefully many of the parents' eyes, to what's happening within our schools, and we all need to stop and pay attention. Is this happening in Suffolk Public Schools? Many decisions are being... Many decisions are being made. Recently, well, actually in May, this school board authorized Ordinance 212239, which was approved to allow the superintendent, without oversight of the school board, free rein for purchasing power. The last few years, I personally have watched as this government body continued to pass reckless policies and approve frivolous spending of our tax dollars. Where has the superintendent managed to tap into all this endless supply of money? But here we are tonight, we're going to talk about the safety of our schools. Thus far, what have we seen this administrative do to improve the safety of our schools? Well, we put our teachers during their planning hours at desk, front desk, you know, so they can serve as welcoming parties and security. Have we updated our buildings? No. Have we added any security measures? No. Do we have SORs in our schools? No. We actually leave them outside in cars in the inclement weather, whether hot or cold, with the gas running while they stay outside because Dr. Gordon doesn't feel police officers need to be inside of our schools. It intimidates certain students. Beginning of last year, I came to the school board to speak because I noticed the concerns and I noticed the issues taking place. And I was humiliated. I was basically made to shut up and then pretty much been pushed off as if I was a terrorist or part of a terrorist group that was trying to come after this school board or force you guys to make decisions that you obviously don't care to make. Your job is to make sure that our children go to these schools safe and that they receive a public education, one where they can leave and be able to continue being a productive person in life. Is that being, is that happening in Suffolk Public Schools? I'm not sure. We have a superintendent who approves a modification of a parking lot that goes, it happens during school hours while students are in school alongside of a 460 roadwork construction happening right down the road. Was the parents, the inconvenience of the parents or the safety of the students considered when these decisions were being made by either this board or the city council? No, obviously not. We're the ones that's supposed to show concern and be considerate as we go through these many different changes. We have so far submitted procedures. Okay, thank you very much. I don't have a lot of time, obviously, 30 seconds here. I can't finish all the points that I would like to make, but sitting back watching this school board continue to give power to our superintendent to spend money frivolously. I mean, a few years ago, we didn't even have money to buy uniforms. We were fundraising and car washing and he steps in and now guess what? We got new uniforms, new shoes, we got it all. Where? Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Be blessed.
Board Member Mayo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, SPS family, to the 2022-2023 school year. I wish to express my sincere thanks to all of our staff members, Dr. Gordon, the SAO staff, principals, and school administrative teams, teachers, and support staff for all that you are already doing to ensure that our students are receiving the education and the care that they so richly deserve. Thank you for a wonderful start to what will be an amazing school year. Your dedication and support mean so much for that. I am grateful. Kudos also to our parents, the school community, and stakeholders for your support, interest, and concern for our students. I had the pleasure of attending the new teacher orientation kickoff breakfast at Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School on August 22. There was much excitement and high energy from the attendees, which flowed throughout the ceremony. To our new teachers, welcome to SPS. We are glad that you chose to join Team SPS. Again, I'd like to congratulate our Region Two Teacher of the Year, Mr. Bartholomew, who will be representing us, our region, for the Teacher of the Year, the Virginia Teacher of the Year. And we congratulate you on this wonderful honor and we are most proud of you. I am particularly proud of the New Center for Production and Performing Arts, and this is a new specialty program which opened at Lakeland High School just this year, a couple of days ago. And this is a marvelous opportunity for our students to learn and grow. In addition, this program may lead to career opportunities in music and the arts for the students who are participants in this program. As many of you know, music has always been an important part of my life as a music educator and as a church musician. Our students' educational needs, safety, and emotional, I'm sorry, and social, emotional well-being are first and foremost, and we will always take that in consideration. That's why we do what we do. That's why the SPS family does what it does. That's why this board does what it does because we put our students first and that's what's important to us. I'd like to thank you again, Dr. Gordon, for your vision and for your leadership and for the commitment from your administrative team as we continue to build the best SPS. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Vice Chair Barham. Vice Chair Barham, would you like to make comments?
Yes. Yes. Couple of comments I'd like to make. I'm proud to be a member of the board. I've been on the board for quite a number of years and I'm very proud that I was able to be here for the IB program coming onboard, Pathways to Engineering, the biomedical, and now the Fine Arts Program that Ms. Mayo just mentioned. That's a great accomplishment for our school system and I think is a product that we have worked on for a long time. And we hope in the future, with the guidance of Dr. Gordon and our staff, that we can come with other programs similar to these that can expand our curriculum. Also, I would like to thank our 2,300-plus employees for their contribution to our opening. These are difficult times in which we are in. We hear of teacher shortages and all types of things daily in the news, but I want to thank all of those who have been a part in playing, in making this a success for Suffolk Public Schools as we open. And I know it's not an easy job, having been a teacher myself, and I can only imagine what it is like today, but I commend all of our employees from the top to the bottom. Also, I'd like to take this time to thank you, school board members, and our clerk, especially Ms. Gardner, Dr. Gordon, and the SPS family for their prayers and thoughts during this difficult time for my husband and myself. For 10 years, we have been on a health journey with my husband. My husband's treatments are now going well. We are optimistic and with God's grace, we will persevere. And again, I thank you for your concerns and prayers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And you are in our prayers and thoughts. We appreciate you. Board Member Reidy?
At this time, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to all of the residents of the Suffolk Borough for your willingness to work alongside with me as I endeavor to do what I feel is in the best interest as I relate back to the citizens and the community and get your margin orders as to what we deem to be in the best interest of our borough and our city as a whole. Thank you for that opportunity. I want to address the elephant in the room. I requested information regarding student pickup and drop-off and it was stated to me that it could be found on the website. However, the information was not posted on the website until Friday, September 2, 2022. At the time I requested the information, it wasn't there. The messenger wasn't sent out to the Monday of the same week. And then to be put through the roller coaster, to just receive the information and listen to board members chime in that they wanted the information, if you rewind the tape, I just listened to it, and then hear board members contradict themselves, it's baffling. I am not on a witch hunt to get anyone. I am not operating in a clique. I am not operating under someone else's direction. I am asking questions because the questions are being asked of me by the citizens I was elected to serve. However, tonight, all of you witness that this information could be provided with a click of an email. So I don't even understand why it was necessary to go through all of those hurdles, jumps, and bumps. With that being said, it is my desire that this board move in a fashion that will put our school division in a place where we are able to do the most good with the resources we have available. I asked that we increase our marketing, not for the board appointees, because we already had an opportunity and some of these same board members chose not to appoint anyone because it was issues with these same committees, which some of the board members chose not to talk about or they didn't want information on. So it's okay for us to allow our committees not to function as we designed them to be. And then we say we're for the people. Once again, I'm not on anyone's stomach, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and how it impacts the people in the Suffolk Borough. I sent an email to the power that be with a recommendation, we were having open houses at all of our schools. Staff was already on the clock to be there. I asked if we could have a flyer or some sort to promote our standing committees. It wasn't greeted with open arms. I was ridiculed. Then I get here tonight and my questions were dismissed without even being answered. I'm not here clout chasing for the lack of better terms. I don't have an agenda to dismantle the school system. It is my goal to be a part of the team but build this plane as we fly. But it's difficult to operate when I'm asking for information and then I'm put through hoops, fire, and brimstone just to get a report that would have been available to me tonight with a click of an email. I am not, and I want to be clear, I am not blaming our superintendent, Dr. John B. Gordon III, because I know Dr. Gordon is excellent at his job. He, we had conversation, but if I ask for a report and our policy, as the board says, the report should have been furnished because it was informational and less than 60 minutes. I don't understand why I couldn't get it. I don't understand. I'm not being a sore loser for the lack of better terms. It's just when you see something, you have to say something. And if we are expecting to move forward, this stinky way of thinking has to change. Now, I'm expecting that as soon as I'm done talking, I will receive either an email, stern conversation, might get a Facebook post or a video because people were recording me tonight, but I stand all 215 pounds behind what I said because it's what's in the best interest of our employees, our citizens, and most of all, our most prized possession, our most precious investment, our children. If we have committees that are not functioning and we're required to have them by law, such as CAC, no one wants to serve on it because of the climate. Board members were made aware and nothing has been done about it. In my email, I can go back all the way to 2019 and show you different instances how our practices have changed. I just want us to do the right thing. I don't mind being wrong, but at least hear me out. At least don't attack me. Enough is enough. I'm tired of it and I'm not going to endure it any longer. Suffolk, it's a new day. We're moving in the right direction. We have some bumps and bruises. Yes, I had to make a statement that some people will twist my words, but I have to let you know what I'm going through and how it's impeding me doing my job. Thank you.
We are going to, at this point, I need to do two things, straighten out two matters that were shared, one on social media and one at a city council meeting. I think there, there are two things that need to be cleared up. One, I think, was just a political thing, someone running for office and thought they ought to just put in something that's, that's off, and I think that needs to be cleared. If someone is running for office, and I don't tell anybody who to vote for or who not to vote for, but if someone is running for office, they need to know their job. If someone is running for the school board, they should know that the school board is an independently elected body from the city council. If you're running for school board, you should know that the school board is independently elected from the city council. The school board doesn't answer to the city council, the city council doesn't answer to the school board. If you write, for instance, someone on the city council to complain about the school board, they'll send you a nice letter saying that the school board is an independently elected body and they don't answer to us, we don't answer to them, we work as cooperative bodies. That's how we work. So going to the school board to insult the city council, going to the city council to insult the school board, it doesn't work. It really is a waste of energy and it's a political ploy. If you're running for the school board, don't do that. It really doesn't make any sense and it's a waste of energy. The other thing is that someone put, and this is very important to me because it's just, I don't know how to explain it other than to say it's an untruth, it's misinformation, there's a three-letter word that's for it, it's a lie. We don't have any segregated schools in Suffolk. Segregation ended legally in 1954 and then again in 1955. John F. Kennedy is not a segregated school. And for people who have information, that's factual information, they know better. But I saw a social media post from an organization that doesn't know how to operate apparently and doesn't know how to tell the truth, but the truth is that we do not have a segregated school, we are not building a segregated school. John F. Kennedy is not segregated now and the new John F. Kennedy will not be segregated. Our schools in Suffolk are open to any residents of Suffolk. You're assigned a school by your address and then we have programs which allow you to move into those programs. If you have written something that is contrary to that, what you have written is a lie. Please stop telling it because it just doesn't go any further and it really makes you look like... like someone who doesn't tell the truth, and that three-letter word explains that, I won't use that anymore, but please stop doing that, and please stop posting it on social media, because it's just not true. And if you want to cause chaos between people, between groups, it doesn't work for people who have any common sense or any level of intelligence. It really doesn't. We do not have segregated schools here in Suffolk. Thank you. I'm not going to waste any more air, any more energy on that. I do want to say this, thank you for a good start to a good school year. We had problems, as well as every other city in this country that opened a school, whether it be public or private. We had small issues, we had bus problems and, and food problems, and kids getting, uh, schedules that needed to be changed and whatever, but fortunately, they were small. And the bigger thing is kids got to go to school, and the kids that I saw coming and going in my neighborhood were happy, and they enjoyed it, and I talked to a couple of them as they were coming home, and they were still excited about going to school in the school year, so I was very pleased with that. I want to say thank you to those of you who worked so hard to make this, to pull this off, from the central office staff, the technology folks, the, the bus drivers, the cafeteria people, everybody who had a role in doing what we do, the folks who kept our buildings cleaned and ready to get started, we appreciate you. I had the honor, as well as, as, uh, Mrs. Jenkins and Mrs. Mayo, and of course, the superintendent and several other staff, to, uh, talk with briefly our, Mr. Bartholomew, our Regional Teacher of the Year. It was indeed an honor to be there and to be with our state superintendent, Mrs. Balo, who was here in our area. It was an honor to meet her and to have her here in our area to present him, and to see how warmly the people at the Nansman River family, uh, received him, and how proud they were that one of their faculty members, uh, got this award. So that was a wonderful thing, and again, I want to say thank you to our teachers who are putting us on the map, not just locally, not just at the state level, but at the national level. We do a great job here in Suffolk, and for anybody who says anything different, they don't know what they're talking about. So I just want to thank you and say to you that we have three informational items on our agenda, and if nobody has a question about those, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn Madam Clerk.
I second.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Howell?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
She's left.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Good night, everyone.